It is after 6:30 and we have a quorum of commissioners present. I will call to order this special meeting of the City of Sonoma Planning Commission of December 14th, 2017. I don't believe I have to talk about the right to appeal since I believe in our agenda tonight we are making no decisions. Potentially, although I will say that no new items will be heard after 10:30. I don't know how long the presentations will go on. We do have two agenda items. Should this occur, it will only be done by a majority vote of the commission and there will be an attempt to schedule the meeting to the following week. Possible dates will be established prior to the close of tonight's meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner Bohar.
Here.
Commissioner Felder.
Here.
Commissioner Jansen.
Here.
Commissioner McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Wellender.
Here.
And Commissioner Carrato.
Here.
I'm here, too. It was nice to hear that many names called out. It's been quite some time. I want to remind the audience and commissioners to please place into silent mode any personal, digital, or analog devices. And at this time, for old times' sake, I'm going to ask my old buddy from the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission, Mr. Commissioner Barnett, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there comments from any member of the audience tonight on an item not appearing on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will continue on. Any adjustments to the night's agenda? Anyone wants to?
Yes.
Felder.
Yes, I would like to change the order of the agenda. I would like to move item number two to be first rather than item one. And so I would make a motion to put item two in the first position.
Do I hear second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll be opposed. I don't like being overturned. All right. The motion passes, so we will move to agenda item number two prior to agenda item number one. Do you want to talk about minutes to the meetings? I have a question, if I may, through staff or attorney. How are we going to have the unapproved minutes become a part of the official record, being that we no longer have the commission established? Because I know we were not current with our set of minutes.
We have a series of minutes that are going to be on your next agenda, and under Rosenberg's Rules of Orders, you need not have been present to approve the minutes.
Okay, great. All right, is there any late correspondence?
No.
All right. Then we will go to new agenda item number one. Do I hear nominations for a new chair?
I have a nomination. I nominate Robert Felder as chairman.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. Return the chair to Mr. Felder.
Thank you, Commissioner Cribb. So, at this point, we will continue on with item number two, and I will call for nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to make a nomination for vice chair. Commissioner Wellender.
I'll second that.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? I would like to nominate Commissioner Barnett. I'll second that. I believe what we will do then, is that the end of the nominations? I believe the procedure is that we would act on the first nomination first and take a vote, and then?
Is there a way I can withdraw my nomination? Because I would... Okay, I decline the nomination, because I'm going to support Commissioner Wellender.
Okay. In that case, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of Commissioner Wellender as vice chair?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Commissioner Wellender, can I have you move over to his seat? Did we need to go to public comment on these things?
Ideally.
We do?
Well, this would be a good opportunity to ask if there's any public comment on the actions that have just been taken.
I guess I will do that. Let's open this up to the public if there is any public comment.
Karen Schugland, 126 Blue Wing Drive. And I just can't believe I'm the only one of two people here for this auspicious and exciting new beginning for the Planning Commission. My only comment would have been, prior to you electing the chairman, that the chairman hopefully be someone who can treat the public impartially and without prejudice during so often many, many heated discussions on both sides of an issue. Congratulations to all of you, and I don't want to be inappropriate, but I would like to ask if there's any place in the meeting for a discussion of the issue that was brought up in the Sonoma Sun today about Carol Jansen's seat and the fact that she is a Sonoma City resident. I realize that it is not your duty to appoint new officers of the Planning Commission. That's the city council, and perhaps that's where the discussion needs to go, but with all due respect to her capabilities, I do have a concern that there apparently were three applicants from outside the city limits who were not seated on the commission. So, that's a question I have for you or whoever, and I wish you well.
Let me attempt to address that. You may also want to join in after I've finished, but the process that I believe that the city council followed was correct according to the way that they had established the rules. The position of an out-of-city person was changed from some, one that was required to one that may be out-of-city.
Okay.
So that it was only at the discretion of the city council as to whether they wanted to appoint somebody that's actually within the city or out of the city to that position.
Okay, okay. I didn't realize that.
The only stipulation that they had to attach to that is that a person that takes the in-city seat has to be an elector of the city, so you have to be a registered voter. And that's important because certain positions, chair, vice chair, have to be city electors.
Yes.
But that's the only other stipulation. So I don't believe there was anything that was violated in what happened with the city council, and perhaps the Sun did their own interpretation.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Did I cover sufficiently?
Chair.
I think when not using the microphone, it's important to turn the microphone off.
That is correct. Thank you, Chair.
Okay.
Chair Felder.
Yes.
May I? I think you're right. What was interesting, though, at the city council meeting was they had this metric on how everyone was selected. And when it came to the at-large seats, there was an in-city seat and an out-of-city seat. And so I think you're right. I don't think they need to select someone from out-of-city, but when they went through the process, it looked like that's what they were doing. So, that's the only sort of idea.
No, there was not real clarity on that, but I think they still made the appointments in the proper way, according to the way that it set the rules up. So, with that, if there's no other public comment, I'll close the public comment at this point. We'll move on to item number one. So who is going to take the lead on this?
Well, I guess I'll start, and I would like to begin simply by welcoming our new planning commission and thanking you all for your service and your spirit of volunteerism. I want to say as a staff person, it's wonderful to have a full complement on the planning commission. So that's kind of a selfish reason why I'm glad to all see you. But I also have to say that you, in stepping up to the plate on this, are taking on a very full workload, and as you will see over the course of the next months and years. And I know you have a sense of that already, but I do, again, just want to thank you because it is a time-consuming and difficult volunteer position that you now find yourselves in. So, what you have done in stepping up is really just a tribute to a public service spirit. So, we have prepared an orientation tonight. It is going to be long, on the one hand. I expect that this will take about two hours or so. But on the other hand, it's also going to be sort of a whirlwind tour of a variety of different topics. I think that I have three slides on the California Environmental Quality Act, which is ridiculous, but we just have a lot of ground to cover. So, this is a condensed version. Over the next months, we will have more in-depth discussions of different topics, for example, the general plan. But tonight is sort of the quick tour of the different responsibilities of the planning commission and some of the different areas of the law that you need to be most aware of going in. And we recognize that there is a wide range of experience on this planning commission. There are people here with us who have served on the planning commission already, sometimes in many cases for many years. We have commissioners who have served also on the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission. We have commissioners who are in the profession, and we have commissioners who are in land development. And so you all bring, I know, a lot of expertise to this role. But that said, there are also a lot of technical and legal issues that are specifically associated with being a planning commissioner that you may not all be aware of, and there's really no reason why you should be until you step into this role. So, that's what we're here to try to cover tonight. And I guess we would like to begin just by introducing ourselves. So, I think this would be a good opportunity for each commissioner, and followed by staff, just to say who they are. So maybe starting with the chair.
My name is Robert Felder. I've been a resident of Sonoma for about 16 years. Have served on the advisory commission, Sonoma Valley Advisor Commission, for a couple of years, and had served previously on the planning commission for eight years. And I did term out, but with everything that's transpired over the past few months, I decided that I might be able to help out with the planning commission moving forward, especially with some of the important things in front of us. So that's why I'm here.
My name is Ron Wellender, and I've been a resident of Sonoma for the last 30 years. And I'm a local landscape architect. I've been involved in the city on a number of fronts, the design review, involvement out at the City Garden on 7th Street, and just, I generally harass the staff as often as I can at City Hall. And I think that's all I'll say.
My name is Carol Jansen, and I was in the San Francisco Bay Area for a number of years, spent a long-term public sector in five Bay Area communities, and then was a consultant in development services and helping corporations, nonprofits, and schools and so forth in getting approvals. And then I left and moved to Vermont, and stayed there for seven years, and came back a little, I think it was a little less than two years ago. But I had never lived in Sonoma prior, so I'm a new resident to Sonoma, very green. So anybody that has anything to educate me, I'm most receptive to. And I had to settle down my property ownership in Vermont and find a good place to live here, and that's been my focus. But now I've done all that. So I'm very, very thankful to be here, and I think it's going to be a great experience for me to be on this commission.
My name is Kelso Barnett. I was born and raised here. I went off to college and have lived in San Francisco, in Boston, and Southern California. Have worked in real estate development, doing market analysis. Went back to business school. Since then, I've started a small real estate development company. For the past seven and a half years, I've been on the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission. And I was on a formula retail commission. And even though I've moved around and sort of lived in various other places, I always considered Sonoma home. So, I'm happy to be involved and honored by the opportunity.
I'm Jim Bohar. I've been involved as a commercial industrial real estate broker in primarily the East Bay for about 35 years, where I represented tenants, and buyers, and developers, and development deals, and a variety of things, mostly involving warehouses and manufacturing buildings. I've been a weekend member of the community. We converted a barn that we owned down on 1st Street West, a few blocks down, into a cottage for our kids and my wife about 20 years ago. And five years ago, we converted the farmhouse on the street to our main residence now, and incidentally won a couple of historic preservation awards for the cottage and for the house that we're pretty proud of. I served with Wendy Atkins on the countywide Bicycle and Pedestrian Action Committee for a year and a half or so, learning about bicycle activities and facilities around the county and in Sonoma. And that was my first foray into civic activities. Thank you.
My name is Bob McDonald, and I've lived in the Bay Area my whole life, and I've lived in Sonoma for the past 15 years. And my background is in urban planning and also in landscape architecture. And I work for a number of municipalities as a city planner, and then also as a construction and project manager for civic construction projects and for open space development. And my passion is the city, and I really want to make this a better place for the people that live here and to do what's right for the community. And so that's why I serve on this commission, and I'm thankful to be able to do so again. Thanks.
I'm James Cribb. I moved to the Bay Area about 25 years ago from Florida. Lived in San Francisco for a number of years. My wife and I, about 15 years ago, became, after being part-time residents for a while, became full-time residents of Sonoma and opened a business here. And it was opening that business and the experience I had that led me to first apply to be on the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission. I served there for eight years, and then after a brief hiatus and some political shenanigans, I joined the Design Review Commission where I've been serving since. Having come from a family who believed in public service and community development, that's just been part of my ethos, and I'm delighted to be reappointed and back here sitting at the dais.
And Linda.
Okay. I'm Linda Carrato, seven years in Sonoma, two times in the early '90s, and then back again in 2012. Four years as a professional podium member of this esteemed body, and many of you know me from that. Was in real estate and construction for many years when I lived in Tiburon. Lived in Tiburon for 23 years. And I was a senior judge for U.S. Sailing, which is more in line with the planning commission than being in real estate and construction, settling disputes. So, that's it, and I'm glad to be here.
Thank you. David, do you want to go through city staff, then?
Sure. Just to start off, Dave Goodison, planning director. Been here a while.
Hi, I'm Veronica Keneb. I'm the Assistant City Attorney, and most of you have seen me here before.
Hi, I'm Jeff Walter. I'm the city attorney. Good evening.
I'm Rob Jeslow. The city senior planner. I've resided here in the city for about 17 years and worked for the city 15 years. Prior to that, worked for Napa County, and then also before that, City of Arcata.
Wendy Atkins, associate planner.
All right. Well, thanks for that. I think it's a good way to get started on this new journey. So, now we're on to a series of presentations, the first of which is going to be something like Planning Commission 101, and that's going to be my part of tonight's show. We've got four presentations altogether. What we would like to do is go through each presentation, then take questions at the conclusion of each presentation. I think we would probably want to take a break after the second presentation, just to stretch our legs or whatever. And then, at the conclusion of all of the presentations and opportunities for planning commission questions, there would be an opportunity for public comment. So, that's how we'd like to handle it, if that is acceptable to the chair.
Sounds good.
All right, then let's get going. Okay, Planning Commission 101. Again, this is very much a whirlwind tour, and apologies, I know that some of this is going to be familiar to many of you. So, we'd like to start off by putting the planning commission and the job that you're doing in a larger context, because you're operating within a framework, an organization. You're operating within a field of different rules and laws and regulations, and it's important to be aware of your surroundings in that regard. So, the starting point with our organization, of course, is the city council. They're the elected body. They are the policymakers and the ultimate decision-makers. Commissions, including the planning commission, are appointed by the council in order to promote citizen participation, provide policy advice, and perform delegated duties. So, for example, the planning commission has a decision-making role, but that decision-making role is delegated to it by the city council. Staff, those of us at these tables, we are directed by the city manager. Staff supports the city council and the commissions by providing you with analysis and support and to help us all implement informed decisions and directions that are made by the city council and the commissions. So, just a quick little organization chart showing the city's structure. Now, to look more closely at the planning commission, it's an unusual commission in the sense that unlike other commissions, it is established pursuant to a state law, specifically Government Code, Section 65100. So, other commissions are purely optional. There may or may not be a design review commission. There may or may not be an arts commission or a parks and recreation commission. But there must be a planning commission, or the city council must specifically decide to take on the duties itself of the planning commission. That said, this planning commission, as any other, is authorized by a local ordinance, and so its powers, duties, and methods of appointment are set by the city council. And again, you're working within a framework of adopted policies and regulations. So, to the question that was raised on the earlier item, under the code that's been adopted by the city council with respect to the composition of the planning commission, we have a seven-member planning commission plus an alternate. Of those seven members, six must be qualified electors of the city. The remaining member may be a resident of Sonoma Valley, but that is optional. So, that, I hope, is clear in terms of just what the requirements for appointment are.
David, can I ask you a brief question on?
Sure.
What is a qualified elector of the city? What are the?
Someone who is registered to vote.
Okay, in a city election?
If you're registered to vote, you can vote.
So if you're registered to vote, you are one. You are a city elector.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you also have to be a resident of the city for that. I mean, it's two things, right?
Also, within this code section, you can see that the very next reference is to the general plan, and that speaks to the fact that the general plan is the central planning document of the city, and also it speaks to the importance of its role, the fact that this is the very next thing that comes up in the municipal code with respect to your responsibilities. So, the other powers and duties are those that are delegated to you, and those are mainly set forth both in different sections of the municipal code and also in the development code, and we'll be getting to that very quickly. So that does bring us to the development code, which is the second reference that's found of the duties of the planning commission. It refers back to the code section that we just looked at, and then, under your duties and authority, it talks about two things. First, the review and determination on applications for development projects and subdivisions. And second, the recommendation to the council for final determinations on development agreements, general plan amendments, specific plans, and development code amendments. So, this, I don't know why that just happened. So, these two divisions here, the review and determination on development projects and recommendations in terms of general plan amendments and updates, and development code amendments and updates, reflects something that we'll be getting into in more detail a bit later on. And that just has to do with how certain decisions are made in a quasi-judicial capacity, which is the review and determination role, and the quasi-legislative capacity, which is your recommendation role with respect to things like a general plan or a development code. So just to quickly go through your basic responsibilities, you review and hold hearings and make recommendations to the council on updates and amendments to the general plan, similarly with the development code. Also, as a planning commission, you review and decide upon individual project applications in terms of consistency with the general plan, the development code, and other policies and regulations. You also undertake special studies as directed by the city council. And you also have an appeal function, because there are certain planning decisions that are made at a staff level, or interpretations. level and/or interpretations that are made by a staff level. Those can be appealed to the Planning Commission, although your decision at the Planning Commission level is also subject to appeal to the City Council. So, this chart shows the different types of decisions and permit types that come before the Planning Commission, code interpretations, general plan amendments, code amendments. And again, for these types of considerations, you're acting in a quasi-legislative capacity and so your role is to make recommendations to the City Council. For these types of issues, which are really different, actually different planning application types, temporary use permit, use permit, demolition permit, here you're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity and you have decision-making authority, although of course that again is subject to appeal to the City Council. And I just wanted to highlight for a moment the site design and architectural review element because here in our development code, that's a shared responsibility. The Planning Commission takes the lead in terms of setting out the basic architectural style that is to be used in a proposed development, but the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission is responsible for the more detailed aspects of the designer view process. So, that is a shared role and sometimes it's one where there can be a certain amount of, oh, I don't know, just friction between the two bodies because sometimes it may seem that the Planning Commission is taking on too detailed of a look in the designer view world, at least maybe from the perspective of the Designer View and Historic Preservation Commission. But that is how it's set out, yes?
Yes, on the, on the design review. On the design review board, are the professionals required to be appointed to that board?
Sonoma is a relatively small community. Our population is approximately 11,000 and in that circumstance, having a flat-out requirement for professional expertise simply hasn't been possible. But the code section for the, that commission is very specific in terms of the different attributes that it is looking for in new commissioners and those do have to do with different areas of professional expertise, both in designer view, planning, and historic preservation.
Thank you.
So, we've, I've already made reference to these types of review responsibility. Quasi-legislative, we'll start with that. That has to do with establishing policies and regulations that are intended to guide future action. So, it's not a specific application. It is a general plan or a general plan amendment or a development code or a development code amendment or design guidelines. So, it's not something to do with a particular project in and of, in itself, but it will guide future decisions on individual projects. The other type of review that you undertake is called quasi-judicial. And in that role, you're applying adopted policies and regulations to a specific proposal and you're making a decision. So, that might be an application for a new development. It might be an application for a use permit or an exception or a variance, or it could be an amendment to an approved development. And the reason why it's important to make this distinction is that there are different considerations that are required in the quasi-judicial role and those have to do essentially with fairness and due process. So, in this role, we have to have a notice public hearing and an opportunity for those affected by the decision to address the hearing body. We have to have impartial decision-makers who are free from bias or conflict of interest. There has to be a full disclosure of the facts and evidence under consideration and the decision that is made needs to be based on facts and evidence that are available in the record and supported by findings. Now, certainly we need to have a public hearing if we're adopting a general plan or a general plan amendment, but there is a higher bar with respect to decisions that are made in a quasi-judicial capacity or that the Council makes in that capacity for that matter. And those are actually going to be topics in some of the next presentations that are coming up after this one. Now, as we alluded to earlier, you're operating within this framework of policies, laws, and regulations and those occur both at the local level and at the state level. So, at the local level, we have things like the general plan. Here we have a development code. We have different design guidelines and then a variety of other ordinances and policies. But we're also operating under constraints imposed upon us, not specific to Sonoma, but statewide, having to do with state planning and zoning laws and this, also the Subdivision Map Act, the California Environmental Quality Act, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation Process that directs jurisdictions to set targets for the development of housing at different affordability levels and a wide range of other laws and regulations. And in this capacity, in this job, we don't get to pick and choose. The law is the law and we need to follow all of the different laws, both locally and those that apply to us through state and federal regulations. So, locally, again, the general plan is the city's fundamental planning document. Of course, it is required by state law and its structure is defined by state law. So, while the general plan certainly reflects local values, local aspirations, local goals and objectives in terms of how the citizens of Sonoma want its city to look in the future, the framework that all of that occurs in is very well-defined in state law and has to be followed at the local level. But that's more of just setting a structure. The local jurisdiction does get, has a pretty wide latitude in terms of filling in that structure with its values and objectives. But once the general plan is established, all other policies and regulations flow from that general plan and all landies' decisions have to be consistent with the general plan. In terms of that structure that I just mentioned, a general plan consists of elements which are essentially topic areas that are required by state law. It may also include optional elements that reflect local issues and priorities and it will also include the necessary background analysis that supports these different policy recommendations in the general plan. So, in our current general plan structure, we have all of the different state mandated elements, of course. Those are listed on the slide and the corresponding elements in the city's general plan that address those different topics. So, for example, under state law, you have a mandated open space element and a mandated conservation element. In our general plan, we've combined those in the environmental resources element and we also have an optional element called the local economy element. Now, this would be a good time to mention that it's the Sonoma 2020 general plan and 2020 is fast approaching. So, one of the major tasks that you've signed up for is participating in a comprehensive update of the city's general plan and that's going to be beginning in 2018, which is right around the corner. And we're not going to get into that tonight, but just as a heads up. This next most important document with respect to local planning regulations is the city's development code. It establishes and maps zoning districts. It identifies permitted and conditionally permitted uses by those districts and it identifies different development standards. It also sets forth the planning permit procedures that we all follow in this job. And that brings us to the planning application process. So, this is kind of a quick and functional overview. It begins with someone having an idea and we're not going to characterize that idea as good, bad, or indifferent, coming up to the counter and trying to find out what the rules are. And in that discussion with our applicant, staff looks at that in terms of the general plan and the development code primarily and typically in terms of the different issues that are brought to us. And it might be something as simple as someone wanting to do an addition to their home that requires a setback exception, or it might be a major subdivision or a hotel or a mixed-use development. So, you'll see the whole range of issues and we will see the whole range of issues come before us at the counter. But again, I think it does need to be stressed that in this part of the job, none of us get to pick and choose. These are applications that are initiated by private individuals and they have the right to initiate those applications and it's our job to review them and process them and it, and we don't decide what applications to take in. You know, we certainly screen out those that are inconsistent, obviously with the general plan and the development code, but apart from that, we take them as they come. The next step would be a project advisory committee review and that would be for a somewhat more complicated project. That's an opportunity for an applicant to sit down with staff from every department to look at possible issues, likely conditions of approval, what kinds of permits are going to be required, what sort of environmental review is likely. So, that's an area of initial feedback to help someone shape their ideas before they file an application. Once we get that application, we have to check it for completeness and we have a limited period of time to do that. Once it's accepted for processing, we take in those fees and we circulate it out to other agencies for those that, again, warrant that. I mean, not every fence-site exception gets forwarded to Sonoma County PRMD for their comment, but projects that involve the county or other agencies are forwarded out so that they can get an early heads-up that someone has this idea and what do you think about it? Once the application is accepted and underway, we need to begin the environmental review process and commission any special studies that might be needed for a larger project that might often involve a traffic study, just by way of an example. Or there might need to be some kind of special analysis to verify that there's, that the sewer infrastructure in the area is adequate, things like that. At the staff level, we develop draft conditions of approval. Those are generated both from standard conditions that we would apply to any project and also from our consultation with other agencies. And then we prepare a staff report and so that's the, the product of all of this that comes to you and it will include an analysis of general plan and development code consistency. It'll discuss project issues and it will include some level, some discussion of the environmental review that applies to the project. And then, once it's before you, it's in your hands. It go, it's out of the staff hands now and it's in your hands. You, in, again, this quasi-judicial capacity, are the decision-makers. And so, we've done a public notice. You are hearing from the applicant. You are hearing from the public. You're reviewing the information that's been presented to you and you're making a decision. Now, that decision might not be a final decision. You might need more information. You might tell the applicant that there needs to be changes in the proposal, but at that point, you are setting the direction in terms of what happens with that application and whether that leads to an outcome ultimately of approval or denial is again in your hands. So, there's a variety of different types of planning applications that you'll be seeing, use permits, exceptions, variances. I'm not going to dwell on this too much. Site design and architectural review, plan development, parcel map, that would be a subdivision of four or fewer parcels, tentative map, five or more parcels. All of these applications, though, when they are reviewed by you, do have some common elements that I'd like to just very briefly review. First, you'll be applying different standards and guidelines and the way you do that is actually laid out in the development code. It's not random. So, the development code talks about what standards are. There are minimum requirements and we note that other requirements may apply and we have a system of resolving conflicting requirements when that comes up. The development code also lays out how guidelines are to be used by the Planning Commission. Guidelines are suggestive. They are strongly recommended, but nonetheless suggestive, suggestive, excuse me, in that you may, as a decision-making authority, approve a discretionary permit for a project even though it fails to comply with one or more guidelines. That said, it cuts both ways. Failure to comply with guidelines is also a basis for denying a project. So, again, this is the gray area of the development code or any other kinds of guidelines that you use. They are, while they are suggestive, you can exercise your discretion to approve a project even though it fails to comply or you may say that, no, this is something that we need to see in, in this project and deny it for failure to comply. But there is a strong distinction that I do need to draw between the standards, which are absolute requirements, and guidelines, which are subject to your discretion.
Can I ask you a question on that, David?
Sure.
Something I need to learn and get more clarity on is, let's assume that a project is denied even though it meets the fundamental standards of the development code. Are Planning Commissioners required to give a rationale for that? In what detail would they have to give a rationale to do something like, or they have the reverse of that, rather than just a yes or no vote? I'm unclear on that.
Well, I'm so glad you asked because that brings us to the second area of commonality between all of these application types that you look at. There are findings that are required for any single application you look at, whether it's a fence-site exception or a major subdivision. Their findings are required because you're operating in this quasi-judicial capacity. Now, in the development code, for each type of permit, the findings that the Planning Commission needs to make to approve that permit are laid out. Now, they also have to be tailored somewhat to show that, okay, just to use the most basic example, any project has to be found to be consistent with the general plan. Now, if you're building a residence, you know, on a existing single-family lot, maybe that is a pretty easy call to make, but, you know, depending on the circumstances of that property or if it's a more complex kind of development, like a subdivision, even though it has a general plan designation of residential, maybe that subdivision needs to be scrutinized in terms of other kinds of general plan policies such as traffic, protection of environmental resources, that sort of thing. So, the scope of the finding and the complexity of the finding is very much related to the scope and complexity of the project. But in the case of guidelines, if the Planning Commission denies a project based on a failure to comply with guidelines, then usually that's a fairly straightforward analysis to make. On the other hand, if the Planning Commission approves a project, even though it may fail to comply with one or more guidelines, then the analysis needs to be a little more extensive. Okay, so why is it okay to do that even though the guideline directs you to do otherwise? So, I hope that provide, helps. And Veronica?
Of course, I'm going to add something.
Please.
I think the question, a little bit beg, beg the question of, do you, can you just make the findings or do the findings need to be supported by facts, i.e. substantial evidence in the record? The Planning Commission does have an obligation to support those findings with facts that are in the record, either facts that are provided in the staff report by the testimony of the public or facts that are brought before you or of common knowledge to the city. Facts are an essential element of findings that can be defended, for instance, as against a challenge. So, yes, it is very important that the Planning Commission articulate its reasons for making its findings, either orally or, most importantly, if it's a particularly controversial project, staff will incorporate those facts into the findings of your resolution, bringing that forward. What was the other thing I was going to say? There are also some limitations and so I did want to just basically touch on state law does provide certain limitations about projects, whether they have to be approved or denied or what special findings might need to be made for a denial or an approval. For instance, a variance requires specific findings under California state law that have to be complied with. There are limitations in state. There are limitations in state housing law about the denial of certain housing projects and whether you have the capability to deny them absent very specific sets of circumstances. So all of that sort of feeds some more detail into your specific question about, do you have to articulate a reason?
I have a question.
Yes?
And it goes back to the housing findings. For instance, we have an affordable housing project. It meets the general plan and it meets the code, and doesn't that fall in under the anti-NIMBY law, the Housing Accountability Act, where we have to pass it?
So I think I'll answer that question with a generally yes. There are some grounds under which pursuant to state law, you have the power to deny, but they are extremely limited.
I've actually had a few questions. Are we doing it at the end? Like, do you want to?
Well, I assume that was going to happen at the end, but it's been happening in the course, and so I'm good either way.
What would you prefer? Because I was, I had questions from like five slides ago. Why don't we just?
Why don't you save those for the end? But in the meantime, we'll certainly proceed. Okay. All right. And then the third commonality in all of these different types of applications that you're reviewing is that there will always be conditions of approval. And we need to be careful that they are measurable, that they are tailored to the project, that they support a legitimate public purpose. I can't include a condition that the applicant has to, you know, wash my car. It's not legitimate public purpose. You can't deny viable economic use of property. And there needs to be a rational connection between the condition of approval and the project request, both in terms of, well, and also it needs to be proportional. So if there is a minor increase in traffic to an intersection that, you know, might already be operating at a low standard, then the impact fee, for example, that would be associated with that isn't going to be, you have to install a new traffic signal, it's going to be representative of the share that the project contributes to the operation of the intersection. And, of course, a condition of approval might also represent a mitigation measure that's required through our environmental review. Which brings us to environmental review. So in all of these different projects, there's going to be some kind of statement about environmental review because the California Environmental Quality Act, which is the law that, of the state of California with respect to, you know, assessing environmental impacts, applies to projects. And every, you know, most things that come before you, not all things, but most things that come before you are projects. And any kind of permit, any kind of discretionary permit, is going to be a project for purposes of the California Environmental Quality Act. Now, that doesn't mean that we need to do an extensive analysis of every fence site exception that crosses your desk, but we do have to note that this is an application and it's a type of application that falls under a category that is considered to be not significant with respect to environmental impact. We have to say that about even the smallest of applications that come before the planning commission. For the largest, we have to do much, much more. So the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA is, in essence, an informational law. It's about identifying and disclosing environmental impacts. Now, what the local decision-makers do with that information is really up to them. A project might have significant environmental impacts that can't be avoided. That project could still be approved. Findings would have to be made, but it could still be approved. So SEQA doesn't dictate outcomes in terms of the approval or denial of a project, but it does let you, the decision-makers, know, and it does let the public know what the environmental consequences of a project are likely to be. And it also lets you know and the public know what potential mitigation measures are out there to address those impacts. So, again, in terms of its purposes, purposes, it's very much an informational objective, both in terms of what are the environmental consequences of a project, what are the measures that might be available to reduce those impacts. And there's a wide range of documents that you will see with respect to environmental review. Very often, for more minor applications, it's a paragraph in the staff report that states that this project is categorically exempt. That represents a classification of activity that is defined in the law, doesn't typically result in significant environmental impacts. It's not an absolute, however. There are activities that could occur that, while normally exempt, might not be due to special circumstances. And one that's fairly common to Sonoma has to do with historic preservation. Say you own a house, you want to build an addition to the back of your house, you meet the setback requirements. You're categorically exempt from the Environmental Quality Act. What if you own a house and that house is historically significant and you want to build an addition to the back? Well, you know what? You are no longer categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act because you have a historic structure and the significance of that structure might be diminished by that addition. And so therefore, an analysis has to be performed to determine whether or not that will be the case. So categorical exemptions aren't categorical in that sense. They can be overridden by specific circumstances. When we believe that a project is likely to have one or more environmental impacts, then typically staff will prepare an initial study, that's basically a checklist, plus analysis that's used to make that determination in a wide range of categories. Aesthetics, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, traffic and transportation, land use, water, utilities. It's quite a wide range, but this is a good opportunity for me to emphasize, too, that that range that we look at all has one limitation. It has to be associated with an impact on the physical environment. SEQA doesn't look at economic impacts, it doesn't look at social impacts, it looks at environmental impacts. Now, there might be different outcomes associated with an initial study. We might go through that analysis and find, oh, well, after all, it won't have a significant, this project won't have a significant impact, in which case a negative declaration can be prepared, which is a finding that the planning commission makes that the project won't have a significant environmental impact. So it's a negative, which is why it's referred to as a negative declaration.
David?
Yes.
Is the word significant defined?
Yes, it is, but it's not necessarily defined in a helpful way. In the law, significant is defined as, you'll have to take this, but it's basically defined as another word that means significant. So, but, and I was-
It's an interpretation.
No, no, but I was just going to say that there's more to it than the word significant. Within each of these areas, under state law and under local law, thresholds are set to determine the level of significance. So if you just look at the definition of a significant, of significance under SEQA, it gives you a very generic definition. But if you look at the definitions of significance for, say, aesthetics, or air quality, or cultural resources, there are very precise definitions in the law. And sometimes those are in state law, but they can also be local definitions, too. So that is a critical feature of the environmental review process, is what those thresholds are and how they're measured. And in each area, they're different. So, I mean, obviously, the threshold of significance for a transportation impact is, you know, obviously different than one for aesthetics, but they are there, they are relatively detailed, and every attempt is made for them to be measurable and objective. But there are situations where there is an element of subjectivity. For example, in particular, in the area of aesthetics. And here, we fall back locally on our design guidelines to provide us with that detailed So a mitigated negative declaration is basically a finding that, well, we've identified some, an impact, or more than one impact, but we've also identified a great way to mitigate that impact or impacts. An environmental impact report is required if we've done this initial study and we've kind of had to throw up our hands a little bit and say, well, you know what, there might be an issue here and we need to do further analysis to figure that out. So the environmental impact report is the vehicle by which that is done. It is something that is not typical. You know, usually we can get through the process with a categorical exemption. Ninety percent of the projects that you look at are going to be categorically exempt. Most of the others will be subject to a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration. You might do an EIR, you know, once a year or even less. It's a very high level of review that isn't normally warranted, but when it is, it's a very valuable tool. So I'm going to close out now with just some, just a very basic discussion of roles and responsibilities. And I wanted to start with the public because that organization chart started with the public. That was in one of our very first slides. The public is who we work for and their role is to, you know, provide their knowledge and to provide their perspective, both as members of the community and as neighbors. But it's important to remember that the public isn't always present at any given meeting. So that brings us to the city council. They're elected by the public, so they are acting on behalf of the public. So when they adopt that general plan, set that policy, they are acting on behalf of the public and those policies represent the policies of the city of Sonoma. So that's their job, is to set those policies, to make legislative actions. They're the final appeal body. They establish the rules and procedures that we all operate under and they appoint all of the different commissions. And unlike anyone else, you know, unlike staff, unlike any commission, they have a political perspective. And when I say that, I don't mean that in a pejorative sense. The word political is often used as pejorative, pejoratively. I don't mean it that way. We live in a democracy and the city council is a political body. They have to have a political perspective, that's their job. But it's not my job and it's not your job. That is their job. The planning commission is obviously appointed by the city council. You review and evaluate staff reports, you act on planning and development projects and you make findings. You make recommendations to the city council on quasi legislative actions, such as general plan updates and amendments to the code. You do hear some appeals and it's also your responsibility, of course, to act in a fair, ethical, and consistent manner. Staff, we're hired and directed by the city manager. That's who we take our direction from. We, our job is to guide and coordinate the review of projects. It's to provide you, the commission, with information and analysis. That would include identifying relevant local policies as well as state and federal laws. It's our job to try to interpret, educate, and monitor, to make sure that the process is followed in a correct way. And it's also our job to act in a fair, ethical, and consistent manner because that's the essence of the law, is to be fair and consistent. And it's also our job to provide a technical and policy perspective. But we all have shared values and responsibilities, and I'm including the public in this. We all need to be respectful of one another, we all need to be communicative, we need to be educated and informed, and we need to be fair and ethical. And so whether that's someone stepping up to the microphone to tell you how they feel about a project, whether it's a staff person writing a report, you on this dais or the city council, those are all of our jobs. So that was Planning Commission 101. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Appreciate that. I think that was a good perspective on that whole process, so. Are we going to move on to meeting fundamentals then?
Well, I think that there are some questions.
We should cover questions on this, this aspect. Council, you've got some?
I do. If anyone else wants to go first?
Go ahead.
All right. I had a couple minor questions and then just when we're talking about the process, I had some thoughts about that. I thought, and I'd like to actually see, is this an appropriate time to?
No.
I see the city attorney nodding his head, so. When would that time be?
At the end of the meeting.
Okay. So then my question is, when we were talking about the general plan getting updated, starting next year in 2020, I believe there was a circulation element that you said was done in 2016 and a housing element done in 2015. Since those were just recently done, will that be part of our update or are we just going to throw those in?
Well, there's going to need to be some, they will be part of the update process, certainly. But that said, they cover a lot of ground that won't need to be covered again. And so, for example, our housing element has been certified as adequate by HCD. It's good through the year 2023. It has a kind of a different cycle than the other general plan amendment. But to the extent that we might make changes that might alter, you know, our housing projections, we would need to update the housing element to reflect that. So if there's a change in the land use plan that affects the housing element, that needs to be carried forward. And similarly with the circulation element. Another large change that needs to occur in the circulation element is that under state law, we will be moving from an LOS, Level of Service-based, analysis of transportation and traffic capacity to, to the vehicle mile traveled-
Vehicle mile traveled.
Or VMT approach, which is totally different. So the circulation element, you know, might end up looking the same in terms of its recommendations, but it's going to look a lot different in terms of its analysis.
Thank you. And that's actually all the questions I have.
Anybody else have questions?
I have a question that has to do with, I guess, initiation of evaluation of policies and guidelines and is it, or can the commission take initiative to make suggestions to like, make changes to, say, for example, design guidelines? Or is that something that purely is dictated by the council or staff or what is the commission's role in being proactive and looking at particular things that come up in the community and/or are particular interest to the commission?
Well, I would say that anything that is going to require any sort of extensive amount of staff time or result in, or has a potential to result in significant policy changes, has to be authorized by the city council. Now, that suggestion for whatever that task may be can certainly, excuse me, originate from the planning commission, but it has to be signed off on by the city council. And ideally, and certainly we haven't always lived in the ideal world, it's best to do that in a structured process, say through a regular meeting between the planning commission and the city council. We haven't always done that, but I believe that moving forward, that's going to be on the agenda.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, I can just follow up on Commissioner McDonald's comment, which was sort of something I also wanted to bring that, bring up. So is the recommendation to bring that up during commissioner comments, just to get the conversation going? And then does that have to agendize to a future meeting and then?
That's right. That's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you.
So if there are no further questions on this part of the presentation, I think we'll move along.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next section of our discussion this evening will deal with, with the basics of running a meeting. How does a meeting progress in a way that's fair, as seamless as possible, efficient and effective, and yet at the same time allows the public to speak their views? The responsibility for running a meeting, a divi- The responsibility for running a meeting devolves to the chair. The planning commission does not have its own specific policy or rules that govern the conduct of its meetings, other than the Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which I've passed out to you. Those have been adopted by the council as applicable to not only the city council but the planning commission. You'll see on page two of those rules, they're not, they're not on the screen, they're handouts only.
Sorry.
Meeting fundamentals would be the next item, David. Page two, on the right-hand column under the role of the chair. Read with me. While all members of the body should know and understand the rules of parliamentary procedure, it is the chair of the body who is charged with applying the rules of conduct of the meeting. The chair should be well-versed in those rules. For all intents and purposes, the chair makes the final ruling on the rules every time the chair states an action. In fact, all decisions by the chair are final unless overruled by the body itself. So the chair wields quite a bit of power in terms of the procedures to be followed, who gets to speak, how long the person gets to speak, and the subject matters that are to be covered by the speakers, be it a commissioner or a member of the public. All those rules, however, that the chair may articulate, as this particular paragraph indicates, can be overruled by a majority of the commission. So if the chair decides, for example, that on a particularly controversial matter, the 257 people in the audience who want to speak should be entitled to speak five minutes apiece, and you multiply that times 250, you realize you're going to be there for four weeks. The commission could overrule the chair's decision to allow each speaker to speak for five minutes and limit the speaker's time to, say, one minute. The law, the Brown Act, which we'll talk about in a bit, does permit the commission to control the amount of time the public speaks on each item. The Attorney General has said three minutes is a good, is a good rule, but it's not hard and fast. If you do have a large audience and it's a controversial item, you can reduce it to less than three minutes. The, I want to walk through the typical process that's followed when a project comes before the commission. And this actually, these slides parallel Rosenberg's Rules of Order on page three of the handout. First, the chair announces the agenda item and clearly states the subject. Then the chair invites the staff report, and the staff report then proceeds. Then the chair turns to the commission and asks if the commission has any questions for clarification. Sometimes we have found with some of the bodies we represent, commissioners or council members get confused at this point and decide it's time to start talking about their position. And sometimes we'll, we'll experience council members in particular who will sort of wax eloquently for four or five, 10 minutes about why they think a particular project should or should not be approved. This is not the time for debate or deliberation. This is the time to ask questions.
Can I ask a question about that, please?
Yes.
What about the idea, let's assume the staff report has certain recommendations which are based on interpretations of the development code or the general plan, and a commissioner has an issue with that interpretation that was made and presented in the staff report, rather than, he may have a position on the project, but he has, right now, has a dispute or needs real clarification on why that finding was made. Is that an appropriate time to make that comment? Ask that question?
I think it is. You can ask the basis for the interpretation advanced by the staff in the report. That's, that's an appropriate thing to do at that time.
Thank you.
Whether you engage in a lengthy debate at that point's another matter. I think maybe not, but if you can, you can ask follow-up questions if you disagree with the explanation given, of course. And that would be up to the chair discretion, too. If the chair suddenly realizes there's going to be a 25-minute colloquy between the commissioner and the staff, the chair could actually indicate that that won't be allowed, that you've had your chance, you've been speaking five minutes, let's move on. That would be an appropriate ruling by the chair.
Just, just to hitchhike on that a little bit, I believe there's also a process, though, if you do have a serious disconnect between a commissioner and staff, there is a process to follow where you can appeal a staff decision, I believe, and you can ask for something in writing, and you can ask for essentially a factual basis for that interpretation.
That's true. If that's, if the interpretation, I'm not sure that was the question, but if the, apart from and isolated from a commission hearing on a particular item, if the planning director has issued an opinion or interpretation, that is subject to an appeal. There's no question about that. I got the impression the question was posed in the context of the staff making a report on, let's say, a 20-unit apartment complex. And as part of the staff report, the planning director had interpreted a section of the development code in a particular way, which led the planning director to make specific recommendations, and the commissioner believed that interpretation was wrong or was asking what the basis for the interpretation was.
Thank you.
So once the commission has had a chance to get the questions asked and answered, then the chair invites the public to speak. And again, this is, the chair is articulating each of these stages and steps of the process so both the commission and the public and staff know exactly where they are. I can already tell that the chair felt that Mr. Felder understands this process. He's been through this particular routine before, which is excellent. And announces that it's time for the public to speak, once again articulates the minute, the time limitations that might be applicable, and opens the public hearing. Once that public hearing has been concluded, that process, then the chair brings the matter back to the commission. All of this should be stated out loud, such as, are there any more comments from the public on Project Z? Seeing no one rise to the podium to speak on the item, I'm going to close public hearing and bring the matter back to commission for deliberation and decision-making. Those things should be stated out loud. It's particularly important if we're in litigation, and we've made a transcript of the proceedings. The judge then can follow exactly what's been happening, knows when the line's been drawn. No more public testimony is allowed on this item, and it's now time for deliberation. At that point, then...
I've got one more to jump in on.
Sure.
I believe we still have the prerogative to reopen the public hearing if we so choose, but then you have to make it available to any and all that wish to speak.
That gets very dicey.
Yeah.
Yes. You need to be fair to all that wish to speak. You can limit to say there shall be no repeating, there can be no repetition. You cannot say what you already said, that won't be allowed. And you could limit the amount of time that's allowed to speakers in a reopening contest.
I'm bringing that up because there have been instances in some of our public hearings where the applicant has been a little confused about the process and wishes to add something to, give you better information for your deliberation, and so we have taken the license to then reopen the public hearing if that seems appropriate.
And I think under that kind of situation, you could open it to the public, but they have to speak on the item, the new item that's come up by the applicant. So you can limit the testimony so you don't get the whole hearing redone all over again. At this point, once the public testimony has concluded, then it's up to the body to make a motion. That's the next step. Now, it's not unusual for a council or a commission to then launch in at this point with some deliberations, some discussions, et cetera. I don't think that's too terribly inappropriate, because sometimes that helps the commissioners and the council members sort of fashion what they want to move, what kind of action they want to take. But technically speaking, you don't know what you're going to be deliberating about, you don't know what the debate is going to be about, unless you have a motion and a second on the floor, so you know exactly what it is that somebody wants. And that way, your comments can be much more focused. So getting to the motion as rapidly and as reasonably rapidly as possible is a good idea. It's a good technique, really crystallizes the discussion. So once a motion has been made, and motions, the way you make motions is described on page three of Rosenberg's Rules, sometimes people will make a motion, I move to make a motion to adopt a resolution. No, it's, I move to adopt a resolution. I move to approve a project. I move to X, Y, Z. That's how a motion is made. That's the appropriate format of a motion. So if a motion is made to approve the 20-unit apartment project that is in my hypotheticals this evening, and there is a second for that motion, then debate and deliberation can occur for sure. And again, it's up to the chair to limit that if he or she wishes to do that. He or she can say, all right, I think four or five minutes apiece is fine, or maybe three minutes is fine. You have seven commissioners, each of whom is entitled to the same liberalities and rules. If, that is, seven times three minutes, you're allowing 21 minutes of debate. So you need to be careful when you start putting time limits, because sometimes they'll be taken, meaning that they'll be exhausted by each commissioner, and you're looking at a 20-minute debate on the commission. If you've had five hours of testimony, you're already in at one or two in the morning, and the meeting begins to deteriorate the longer it continues, because as the evening progresses, decision-making becomes more and more problematic. At least clear and intelligent decision-making, in my experience, becomes more problematic as the evening wanes.
If I heard you correctly, in your comment about getting to a motion more quickly, because that tends to solidify the discussion or the, something to really discuss and debate, it has been my experience in the past on the commission that quite often we are given an opportunity to make general comments based upon what we had heard, either from the public testimony or from the homework we've done. And I have found that helpful as far as continuing to kind of mull over my own thought process on it. Are you suggesting that, in the interest of time, that we should not pursue that and get more directly into a motion?
I'm not saying that. You need to do what's comfortable for this body and what seems to work best for this body in making intelligent decisions. There has been at times, however, when this sort of discussion that you talked about, questions and what did the public say, and what did I learn when I went out to the site to inspect the property, they're unfocused, there's no real relevancy to what might in fact ultimately be what you have to decide. And that's, again, a chair call. The chair can hear these comments and say, oh, I think we need a motion, and can encourage a motion to be put on the floor. The chair can make a motion, which is another way of focusing the commission as a whole. So it's a, you know, democracy is messy. There's nothing clean. There's no linear process that democracy admits to. It's not A to B to C, no way. It just doesn't happen that way. I'd like to talk a little bit about motions, just one example of motions. Once a motion's been made and seconded, it's best for the chair to call out a motion's been made by Commissioner X and seconded by Commissioner Y to do, to approve the resolution in the package that approves a 20-unit apartment project. Once that motion has been made and the chair has articulated so everybody in the commission knows what's on the table, there are other motions that can be made. The most popular and often-used motion is an amendment, amendment motion. For example, in my hypothetical, let's assume the staff recommendation provided for, in my hypothetical 20-unit apartment project, it provided for four onsite parking spots only. And the, there's a couple commissioners that thought that was way underparked, and thought there had to be at least two onsite parking spaces per unit. So, but there's, the motion that was made was to approve the resolution in the package, which was the one prepared by the staff, and it included two parking spots on the site. The motion in seconded was to approve that resolution with two parking spaces on site. A commissioner could say, I want to make a motion to amend that motion by requiring 50 parking spaces on the site. Another commissioner could second that. That amendment motion must be addressed first. Meanwhile, the main, the main motion sort of sits there, perking along off to the side. The amendment motion then is addressed by the chair, and debates occurs on it, and then action's taken, either roll call or ayes and nays. And if that motion fails, then the main motion has not been affected at all, and then the main motion can be acted upon, and a roll call vote can be taken on the main motion. However, if the amendment motion passed, then it amends the main motion, and the main motion now calls out for 50 parking spaces, not two. And the main motion, as amended, then can be acted upon by the commission. The Brown Act, as well as Robert's Rules of Order, I'm sorry, Rosenberg's Rules of Order, provides that once the motion has been acted upon, the chair is required to summarize it, essentially, and to indicate that four commissioners voted in favor and three commissioners voted against the motion to approve the 20-unit apartment complex with 50 parking spaces on site. And then that concludes that particular item. There are a number of slides that have been handed out to you that talk about decorum, courtesy, one person speaking at a particular time, not interrupting, sort of fundamental rules of discourse when you're part of a decision-making body. I won't go through all of them. I would like to point out a couple, however. Maybe two, another slide, David? Two more? Pointers and tips at the top? Oops. Go back a little bit.
Sorry.
That's all right. All right. The top one, don't engage in dialogue with the audience. This is a particular behavior pattern that I found council members are more inclined to engage in than in commissioners. And as a council member, you almost never win, because if you get the upper hand of this debate, because you're typically engaging in a dialogue, debating with some in the audience with whom you disagree. If you get the upper hand, then you're treated and you're viewed sort of as a bully, as in being a smarty pants. If you lose the debate, then you're looked, you're viewed, I think, as sort of, well, maybe you're not quite as smart as you thought you were. So it's really important, I think, to be careful if you want to engage in a dialogue with the audience or members of the audience, and the chair probably should rule that out of order, to be honest with you. The other point I want to talk about is bullet point three on this screen. And that's the issue of whether or not you meet with staff before the meeting to get some of your concerns taken care of. I think this is really important to an effective meeting. If you wait for all of your concerns to be addressed at the meeting, then you do two or three things. One, you sometimes may not get the kind of answer you want, and there may be friction that is evidenced in that dialogue with the staff. Number two, it may delay the process unnecessarily, because you're spending four or five or 10 minutes trying to iron out these questions that you could have had resolved beforehand. And three, it sometimes is viewed fairly unprofessionally, meaning it doesn't look professional to be sort of duking it out with the staff on particular items that could have been handled beforehand. One other item I want to point out is this. I myself served as a planning commissioner for the county a number of years ago. And one of the issues that would crop up is whether or not it was appropriate to view the site of the projects and talk with the neighbors and the developer in advance of the meeting. I tended to decline from doing that, but that was my personal preference. One reason was that if it's a quasi-judicial proceeding, which David has described, quasi-judicial means that you're acting as a judge, you're sort of a quasi-judicial body. You're taking existing standards, the development code, the general plan, all the requirements that those impose, and seeing whether or not the project that's being proposed to you meets those standards. You're applying, you're applying law to facts, which is what judges do all the time. Under those circumstances, you need to be unbiased and be totally fair. That's what the law requires in order for due process to be assured the applicant and the public. And if you've gone out to the site and visited with the developer, talked with 75 neighbors, you need to disclose that as part of the public hearing process, so the public knows you've got evidence that may have a bearing on this matter outside of the hearing that's being conducted before you. And if, in fact, you are relying on that evidence, and that evidence is not coming before the body at the hearing, you need to disclose that, too. I didn't really want to be put in that position. I didn't want to disclose I'd been meeting with people and talking with neighbors, et cetera, but it's totally up to you.
I have a question about that, actually. Chair Felder?
Right.
Have you ever seen a city or...
Have you ever seen a city or a body like this sort of establish sort of like a planning commission code where if we decided maybe we shouldn't do that, we shouldn't meet with the neighbors, we shouldn't meet with the developer, that we could sort of pass our own sort of code of ethics? Or, I mean, would that be a possibility? Or do you think it's better to just sort of leave it up to everyone's individual interpretation?
No, there are many, many planning commissions throughout the state of California have their own set of policies and standards. They have to ultimately be blessed by the council. But that's, in talking with Rebecca Bar, who's the city clerk, I think she's thinking about doing that, to be honest with you, that there may be a proposal coming down the pike here in the next several months that will be a policy document for the planning commission.
Thank you.
I'm going to let Linda come in just a second.
I have a question dovetailing off of what was just said. So if we do meet with like a neighborhood association or a developer, then what I'm hearing is that it's very important that we do not imply which way we're going to vote before the meeting, correct?
We'll get into that, but that's certainly my position.
Okay.
And later I'll explain why that's the case.
Okay.
But it also is very important, if you have had that meeting with neighbors or the applicant, to disclose it at the meeting itself, as Jeff was saying, because you have to make sure that the public, everybody involved in the process knows what you've done.
I had a question about, actually, before deliberating and making a decision, the policies and to disclose whether or not we've met with another commissioner, whether or not we've been approached by a council member, whether or not we have been approached by a member of the press, and if we've had discussions with them, what we are, like, for example, if we're called by the press, do we just not return the phone call? Or if a council member calls, do we not call them? Sometimes that could be very awkward, and so what's the decorum with that?
We're going to get into that next with the Brown Act, but let's address it now. If the press is just calling you for your opinion and your, what your position is on a given project, you shouldn't tell them what it is because you shouldn't theoretically have one until you've heard all the evidence that's coming forth at a future commission meeting. If you have one, that means you're predisposed to decide in a particular way, which may reveal bias. So you shouldn't have an opinion, even if you do, don't express it to the press. I don't think you need to disclose the fact that the press has called you. What's important is you disclose those contexts where you have obtained information that might have a bearing on your decision-making. So if somebody's trying to get information out of you, I don't think you need to disclose that. If a council member has approached you and told you that you better vote X in a particular way, I don't know what to tell you. I have no opinion about that. Let's just hope that doesn't happen.
Excuse me, I have a comment on the contact by the press. I was in that situation a few months ago, and I called David Goodison, and we talked about it, and decided that, I like to be, I like to be open to the press, I don't want to stonewall them, but at the same time, I don't want to say anything outside of the meeting. David and I agreed to tell the reporter, who is a prominent reporter in town in the IT, that you really have to watch the tape of the meeting because that's what the, that's where I spoke, you have to go on what I said at the meeting and go from there, and I can't make any further comment beyond that, please watch the tape. And that's what happened, and he reported something in the paper, which was okay with me.
Yes, and that's an example of, of something that is being, a question that has occurred after the fact, after the decision has been made, so that, you know, which is kind of a, and I still think that was good advice that I gave you, don't get me wrong.
I suppose you got given that advice in advance, too.
But, but there are just particular rules about communications that occur before the meeting, and so that's why the city attorneys are emphasizing that aspect of it.
Okay.
But, but yeah, you could be contacted by the press for comment after a decision is made to get your personal perspective. And as a, and I suppose you can give your personal perspective, but it has to be just that. You can't speak on behalf of the planning commission because you're only one commissioner.
Just another caution about the after-the-fact comment. Oftentimes, a project isn't really done when you're done with it, if that makes sense. So it may come back for final design review, may come back for something else. So that caution about, just because you've taken one vote on a project, doesn't mean it might not be coming back before you, and your, what appears to be after-the-fact comment is before some subsequent vote. So it could be appealed, exactly. So there's a lot of caution in those, I think David's advice with regard to, look at the tape, you'll see my comments on the tape, you can get your quotes there, is actually quite good advice.
Jeff, I'd like to go back to your earlier comment about the warning or the concern about going to a site with the applicant or whatever.
Remember, that's my, that's more or less my personal predilection.
And that's okay, and that's what I'm asking for further comment on. It seems like some of the things that are brought before us have some degree of interpretation as far as, you know, very benign one, you know, fence heights, exceptions, you know. It seems that if we don't do our homework, if we don't see the context, the surrounding area, then we haven't done our homework. I understand clearly that if we choose to accept an invitation from an applicant to go to a site and listen to some chatter while you're at the site, then it's, then you should be like a deer with headlights on and your eyes glazed over and you just, you know, smile and benign, you know, and take in what you want to take in and leave without any expression of tilting one way or the other. But it, I can think of one project in particular that was quite controversial and was of interest to many people in the public. And I think that I would have been hindered had I not been able to go to the site, visually take in the site, and then come back and, of course, hear all the public testimony. So I just want to make sure that I'm not opening up myself or the commission to a liability that I should avoid.
No, I think you're absolutely right. Looking at the physical site, I think, can oftentimes be very important.
So my kind of follow-on to that, because it's sort of the same issue, but do we have, because frequently, the only way to gain access to these sites is through the applicant, do we have any authority to, if we want to see it, you know, because it so often is the case that it's like, because of the particular nature of the project, it's like, there's a gatekeeper that we, in a sense, have to go through if we want to do that level of research. Is there any authority or anything we have to then overrule that or be able to do that without any interference from the applicant?
You know, in preparing for this presentation, I think I came across a government code section that actually authorizes planning commissioners and council members to go onto private property without the permission of the owner. Let me research that, and I'll get back to David, and he can provide a memo to the commission as a whole.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, let's verify that before anyone gets arrested.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's been my concern, because sometimes that's the only way that you can gain access is when the applicant allows you, and then you're sort of in their, their toe.
Just also to follow up on that, in talking about, you know, planning commission policy and procedures, maybe sometimes, particularly when there's a controversial project, it might be helpful for this, the staff member to be there just so it's, kind of neutralizes everything that takes place on site. Because sometimes you are on, on site and you're just there with the applicant, the consultants, and you are kind of almost barraged with all these particular perspectives on things and saying, I want you to look at this, or, you know, make sure that you understand this. And so, but anyway, I think that we might benefit from some sort of procedure, especially controversial ones.
That concludes my, if there are no further questions, that concludes my presentation on sort of meeting, meeting 101.
More.
I had a couple of questions, Jeff. On this slide that's above us right now, or in front of us right now, on the bottom, when it discusses study sessions, so, I mean, at least in my experience on design review, and I know planning commission has had study sessions as well, if you're sort of talking about a project and getting really down into the details of a project, sort of signaling whether a project is okay or not okay, you're like this, or you don't like that, but it's a study session, it's not the actual hearing, have you potentially biased yourself for the eventual hearing? And if so, is this practice of study sessions a good idea?
Well, David and Veronica and I and Kathy have been talking about that issue, and I think we're likely not going to have them anymore. And these are pre-application study sessions, before the application has been submitted.
Oh, I see.
There's been, in the past, there's been a practice of having these study sessions, they get sort of a, you know, a reaction, early read on what the commission might view, think about a particular project. Those are probably not going to continue.
Okay. We do have a set of study session guidelines that were approved by the planning commission to help us out, but perhaps that should be reviewed and see if that still is applicable.
Yeah. As Jeff has mentioned, there definitely are concerns about how study sessions can inadvertently lead to questions about bias, and we definitely want to avoid that. That said, I don't know that we've come to a particular conclusion yet in terms of whether or not we'll never have study sessions again, but it's something that we're looking at very carefully. And in the meantime, the planning commission does have guidelines concerning how study sessions are to be managed that are intended to address that problem.
And I guess I would-
And I will distribute those to all of the commission.
And I would also encourage that if we do end up having a study session that's going to come up on a future agenda, I would like to have some discussion at the end of the meeting to go through study session guidelines so that the commission is, is up to speed on how to handle that. Thank you.
And also, just to follow up on that, there's a difference between a study session where we're just trying to discuss policy and procedure and city policies versus an actual physical project of a developer.
That's exactly right, and that's the precise difference between what we've been talking about as a quasi-judicial action and a quasi-legislative action. You can't really bias yourself when you're conducting a discussion that concerns a quasi-judicial action.
No, a quasi-legislative act-
Sorry, quasi-legislative.
Yeah. Which means it's a policymaking exercise, a general plan amendment, zoning code amendment, those kind of things. You can have all the bias you possibly could want, because those are supposed to be the times for you to, to exert your philosophical principles about planning in the city of Sonoma. No, we're not going to put industrial uses on that corner. I'm sorry, that's just not going to happen. I hate industrial uses. I've hated them ever since I was born. You can say that, but you can't say, I hate that 20-unit project, I've hated it ever since I saw it appear in the paper. That's a different issue. It's somebody's real property, you've got to be careful about it.
So to your point about legislative discussions, you know, like in Sonoma, it might be Airbnb, tasting rooms, et cetera, is that something not only, you know, on this body you can get up and just sort of say whatever you want, but is that something you can discuss at the city council as well? Because typically, those discussions originate at the city council and then come here. So would that be appropriate? Have you biased yourself if you speak at the city council?
So let's see, the scenario would be the issue comes before the council first, and you're, as a planning commissioner-
Sometimes it originates there, and then you refer it to-
Refer it back to the commission. I think legally, it's probably fine. There are some council members and some mayors who do not like to see their planning commission members showing up and giving opinions about something that the commission has already taken action on or is about to. But that's a very, that's sort of a very individualized issue. I know there was a mayor in Nevada who excoriated a planning commissioner, who had taken a vote on a very controversial project. He was in the minority of the planning commission vote, so he decided he would try to persuade the council to overturn the commission's decision because he disagreed with it. So he showed up at a council meeting and lobbied the council in public comment, and the mayor was not happy about that. You had your shot, you made your peace at that time, that's it. And expressed disappointment in the commissioner coming before the council and trying to get a second bite of the apple. That is very individualized. There's no law that prohibits that from occurring. The entire commission could theoretically come to the council and pitch whatever it wants to pitch. Whether that's a wise idea?
Just to follow up on that, though, as a, as a citizen, you have the right to address the council as a citizen, not as a commission. So I guess what you're saying is that when you're following it through as a planning commissioner, trying to say, I voted this way as a commissioner, and I compel you to consider my thing, as opposed to saying, I'm a resident of First Street West and I'm concerned about traffic and I really don't, you know, it impacts me specifically this way, so if you vote for this project, you know, I'm going to be impacted because I won't be able to, like, walk down my street or whatever.
Well, the, the key is you can't have it both ways. If you are personally, feel that you're going to be personally and detrimentally affected by a project, then, you know, it would seem to me that you should recuse yourself.
You should recuse yourself.
Get into this discussion.
Okay.
In that line between, I'm speaking now as an individual citizen of the city and not a planning commission, that's a really fine line, because they all know you're, there is a commissioner. They all know you're a commissioner. They appointed you, they have respect for you. So it's, you know, other than the point that David made, which is a very good one, if you really have been impacted by this project, you should not have been participating as a commissioner. And you would have been allowed to speak then before the commission itself. You would have stepped down, recused yourself, announced why you have a disqualifying interest, stepped down, become a member of the audience, you can then come back to the podium as a member of the public and speak about how that project affects you individually. And then you have the same right when the matter gets before the council.
One more quick question.
Back to the topic of the study sessions, and I'm playing a little bit of a devil's advocate, just real quickly. Applicant has an idea about pursuing something. If he chooses to pursue it, usually means some rather significant investment of money. So is it then that the planning departments would be the, would be the appropriate place for an applicant to come in and say, gee, I have this fabulous idea about creating, you know, an amusement park in the plaza, and I want to get your feedback on it? Because what I feel uncomfortable about no study sessions is that, you know, applicants in the past have come before us and had a study session, and they've spent a significant amount of money just before the study session, and then, you know, they have to make a decision, do they want to pursue it further or not? But it seems like it was legitimate on that side of the table, so to speak, to ask for it. And what I'm hearing now is it's, it's hard to execute a study session without tipping a bias.
I think it's hard, the difficulty that you have, depending on what the study session is about, is the question of, now you have the applicant in the room, you're hearing a presentation, one side of the coin, if you will, on that study session, and let's say a particular planning commission member at that study session says, I hate your project, it's terrible, I'm never going to vote for this project, take it away, go away, I don't ever want to see it again, don't even submit this application. That's an indication of bias against the project. So when that project comes forward, and we've had this happen in multiple jurisdictions, that project comes forward, the applicant says, well, Planning Commissioner James shouldn't be able to participate because Planning Commissioner James is predisposed to deny me my project, and here's why. He made a comment on February 27th that he'd never support my project, no matter what. So for the developer or applicant to get meaningful information, their- So, for the developer or applicant to get meaningful information, they're frankly trying to draw the bias out, and then, once they've drawn it out, they turn it against you and your participation. And so, it presents due process problems in subsequent hearing before the body.
There are cities in California that actually have a formal, I call them sneak peek process. The developer wants a little sneak peek to see whether his or her $50 million project with, you know, half a million dollar of soft costs just to get it to the study session is going to really be worth it. And I totally understand that, we all understand that. We all understand why it would be appropriate and a good thing to avoid having landowners and developers spending money unnecessarily. And those cities have pretty rigid guidelines on what commissioners and council members can say in those study sessions. They would have to be, and because they have these guidelines, the utility of these sessions is reduced, is diminished. Because I would always, if I were part of these, I would begin the evening with an admonition to the developer and the assembled masses. Everything you hear tonight from the commission is completely non-binding, does not reflect their final decision-making. You cannot rely upon it, and thus go forward. Let's have a discussion about things you cannot rely upon that are non-binding and are meaningless. And that's how you have to structure these things, because we, first of all, don't, typically there's not an environmental document prepared. The commission has a little smidgen of the actual facts of the impacts of the project. You don't have a full deck to make a decision on. So, it's really sort of unfair, in my view, to put that kind of burden on the commission and the council to get that sort of gut reaction when you don't have all the facts. So, it's very complicated.
I'm just going to add a slight counterpoint and just say, I mean, the purpose of a study session isn't to make a decision, so it's, you know, not necessarily a problem that you don't have that full deck yet, but maybe it's an opportunity to identify pieces that you need for an informed decision down the road. So, I understand definitely the qualms about study sessions, but I also continue to see some value in them, but it is definitely an open discussion as to whether or not that's going to be a continued policy.
Well, I think there are some other alternate solutions to that, like having a separate committee or body screen projects, which could be essentially a study session environment before it comes before a commission.
That sounds scary.
There's also, some cities also have what they call pre-application neighborhood meetings, where city staff facilitates at a public building, library, maybe even here, where sometimes a, say, for example, one of the commissioners is present, is not vocal, but is just listening, but not making any sort of comments. And those are useful, too, it's just a different kind of hybrid of, so that a developer or an applicant has their flavor, so to speak, of what the temperament of the neighborhood and the community thinks about a project without actually subjecting all the commissioners to that.
Well, and that's an excellent, you know, kind of other way to sort of get a temperature check on a project. But if it's okay with the planning commission, I mean, the study session issue is something that you are going to have to dive in more deeply down the road, it's probably time to move on, because we still actually have quite a bit of ground to cover, if that's okay with the chair.
Let's move on.
All right. Would you mind if I took just a few minutes, because I've got to load up the two other presentations?
It will take about a three or four-minute recess.
Great, thank you.
Does it feel cold in here?
I'm going to call the meeting back to order.
The next slide deals with the Brown Act. This is a fairly detailed analysis of a part of the Brown Act. The Brown Act is California's sunshine law, and its goal is to make all meetings of legislative bodies open to the public, so the public can get notice of what the meeting is about, get the notice of when the meeting's going to take place, be there to witness the actions of and deliberations of the legislative body, and to speak, to be able to speak their mind to the legislative body that's controlling their city or jurisdiction in which they live. The question that you begin analyzing the Brown Act with is, do you have a meeting of a legislative body? Because if you have a meeting of a legislative body, then it needs to be in public. So, what is a legislative body? Well, it certainly is the planning commission, there's no question about it. It's the town, it's the city council. However, it does not include a committee of this commission made up of less than a majority. So, three members of this body could be formed in a committee to, say, study the affordable housing project on Broadway, and come back to the commission with a report on its impact on nuclear waste. All right? Totally weird hypothetically, because I don't want to get close to the real facts, right? So, three of you could go out and study the impacts of the affordable housing project on nuclear waste. The commission could tell this three-member person, three-member committee to conclude their work in three months, come back with a written report, and the committee would then be dissolved. That committee would be considered an ad hoc committee, it would not have to comply with the Brown Act. It could do all of its work in private and in secret. It wouldn't have to have a notice of its meetings, it wouldn't have to have the public attending and speaking and listening, it could be done entirely in secret. That's to be contrasted with a, what's called a standing committee. This commission could create a standing committee of three of your members that annually looks at the general plan to see what kind of updates and amendments might be appropriate. And the membership may change over time. It's a committee, though, that exists for a long, long time, it's been around for years and years and years. That committee would be subject to the Brown Act, it would have to issue notices, the staff would have to publish notices of your meetings, create an agenda of the items you'd be discussing, the public would be entitled to be there. Other members of the commission, who are in all the committee, could attend, but they would have to be observers only. They would have to be in the back of the room, looking and watching and listening, but saying nothing. Those are some exceptions to the Brown Act's open meeting requirement for legislative bodies. You can create committees. Ad hoc committees are free of the Brown Act, standing committees are not.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Does an ad hoc committee have to be formed by the body? Or can it be three guys get together and chat about something that pertains to land use in Sonoma?
The three guys, the three commissioners who informally meet at Starbucks on Saturday morning, they're less than the majority, they're less than a quorum, and they can do that all they want. They can't talk to anybody else, though, in private.
Right.
They also could form their own committee, they could decide that they want to get a group of citizens to advise them on the upcoming general plan update. So, three members of this committee, this commission could privately decide that they would like to have a five-person committee advise them and meet at one of their homes on a Saturday morning for coffee and donuts. That would be an exception to the Brown Act, because this body as a whole is not creating that committee. Members of it are, but the body as a whole is not.
Thank you.
What's a meeting? A meeting is a congregation of a majority of the members of the commission at the same time and same place to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action upon any item within your subject-matter jurisdiction, whatever you have control over. If there is a majority of you congregating together at the same time, that's a meeting. So, if four of you decide to meet at Starbucks every Saturday morning to talk about planning items, that is a meeting, and that's illegal if you're doing that secretly and privately without notice. Or, if three of you are meeting privately, and you decide that one of you is going to talk with two other commission members, either by email, or a text message, or a phone call, or maybe a meeting at Pete's, that's a violation of the Brown Act, too, because you're involving now four or more, a majority or more, in deliberating about issues that come before this body. Emails are particularly troublesome. If you ever get an email from another commissioner that says, "That project that's coming up two weeks from now, boy, do I hate it, I'm voting against it," do not reply. That one unilateral email may be acceptable under the Brown Act, but responding to it, particularly if you reply all, oh my goodness, saying, "I certainly agree with you, Joe, I'm not voting in favor of that project either." Suddenly, the entire commission knows two votes, and you're developing a collective concurrence, you're exchanging facts that advance how this commission may ultimately act in public, in a publicly noticed meeting. Email chains are also difficult, be careful. A planning commissioner sends an email to Nextdoor about a project, Nextdoor sends it to 47 other people, including two other commissioners, then that gets sent over to somebody on Facebook, they send it to four other commissioners, and before long, seven commissioners have received this darn thing, and you're reading through it, and you realize, "Oh, my goodness, that's Commissioner Y is saying that," and reading it, and suddenly you realize that you've just read five or six email messages from commissioners on this email chain that just came to you. Those are very difficult to deal with. Can you be forced to violate the Brown Act? I don't know the answer to that question. Once you start reading these things and you're starting to see that there's a bunch of commissioners who are tagging onto this email chain, it's advisable, just simply don't read the rest of it, delete it, and move on. Because you're not supposed to be doing that in private, you're not supposed to be exchanging facts or ideas, giving indications of how you may vote on a particular project in private. That's the main prohibition of the Brown Act. On page three, this is it here, this is the page here, these are some examples, some hypotheticals of things to watch out for. Some of these hypotheticals deal with developers who may be phone-calling you or inviting you to a project, and they're talking to you about the other commissioners that have also come out to the project, and the things that that commissioner was told, and what that commissioner may have told the developer, and the developer does that with all seven commissioners. And through that process, you learn what all the other commissioners said to this developer about the project. That's a violation of the Brown Act, in my view. If he does that with every one of you, so that you all have a sense of what the other commissioners are saying, thinking, and likely to do when the matter finally comes before the commission in a notice public meeting, be careful. If you're there with a developer, indicate to the developer you do not want to hear anything about what he said, or she said, to another commissioner, or what other commissioners may have said to him or her. You make that one of the rules of your meeting with the developer. Likewise, if the media calls you and starts asking you questions about a project, make it clear at the very beginning that you're not going to, you don't, you do not want to be providing any information about what other commissioners may have said about the project. And as we talked about it earlier, it's best not to tell the developer or the media before the matter comes, before the commission in a notice public hearing, what you think. That could be an indication of bias, predisposition to making a decision without hearing all the evidence that will come before you at the public hearing. Be an active listener, but don't volunteer your opinions. The Brown Act does not control-
Excuse me, Jeff?
Yes?
May I ask a question about meetings in general? And this sort of relates to our previous section about the utility of visiting a site often, you know, to see the physical site, that would be very important, but obviously you run into risks of just, you know, being there with the developer or someone else, and just, is there a way to, because obviously, then, the most efficient way to do that is if all seven of us went at once, maybe with city staff, if we could create a time, is there a way to specially notice that meeting and just open it up to the public? And the reality is, probably it'll just be the seven of us, and maybe city staff could facilitate that, and it's efficient, and we see the site, but we don't have that kind of interaction?
Absolutely. If it's noticed as a special meeting at the site of the commission, that's completely appropriate.
That might be a suggestion for that problem.
A couple of other pointers I'd like to make here is that if a organization, other than the city, like a neighborhood group, either an HOA, or neighbors who are opposed to a project, for example, organize a meeting at one of the neighbor's homes on a Saturday morning. It's open and publicized, meaning the public can walk into this home, and invites a majority or all of the commissioners to go to this coffee klatch to talk about the project. You can go to that. You can't talk amongst yourselves about the project, but you're entitled to speak during the portion of the meeting where that is appropriate. Now, the League has developed some publications about the Brown Act, which I would recommend that you get if you can. It's called Open in Public, and they're in the third or fourth edition, and they're pretty, they're pretty good. It's well worth having, it's a fairly small, concise pamphlet-like document. And they sometimes will have hypotheticals, and this is one of them, where they create this neighborhood meeting, and a majority of the council are there, and the council members are asked about the project and what they think about it. And the League's materials indicate that they strongly recommend the council not give an opinion about the project, but just stand up and talk about how important it is to get public input, and how important public engagement and involvement in projects like this are, is. And that's the kind of thing that we recommend that you say if you're asked to speak at some of these neighborhood meetings. Again, disclosing your position on various projects is problematic if it's not done in a public, noticed meeting. There is no Brown Act violation if you meet with a neighbor, or another, as I said before, if you meet with two other commissioners privately, that's not a Brown Act violation. Going to conferences, league conferences, as a body, is not a violation of the Brown Act, where you're all in the same seminar, listening to a presentation. Social gatherings, if there's a majority of you at a social gathering, that's also not a problem under the Brown Act. Shy away from talking about city business when you're in those settings, however. You also can, as I said before, en masse, can attend a council meeting that's been properly noticed. A majority or all of the commission can go to a council meeting. All the council members can come to one of your properly noticed meetings. You all can go to a board of supervisors' meeting together. You can't talk amongst yourselves, but you can speak during the public comment portion at any of those meetings you're attending, at the board of supervisors, the county planning commission, the county board of zoning adjustment, or the city council meeting. You can each talk during the public comment portion, whether that's wise or advisable is another matter. Last thing I wanted to cover with respect to the Brown Act is what do you do when something comes up during a meeting that's not on the agenda? There are things you can do, and they're set forth, ah, on this very page, agenda requirements. The general rule is under B2, no action or discussion can take place concerning any item not on the agenda. However, number three, you can request staff to report back to the commission at a future meeting concerning any matter, even though your request is not agendized. You can take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. And we earlier talked about how you might get a discussion about study sessions or other directives that you might want to pass on to the council through staff, how would you get that agendized? You could do that even at a meeting like this. If at the close of this meeting, there's two or three things that you'd like to see come back at a future commission meeting, you could actually take action to place those on a future agenda tonight, even though it's not, they're not agendized. Under paragraph four on this particular slide, the commission or the staff can briefly respond to statements made by the public during the public comment portion. Again, this is briefly respond. This is not licensed to engage in a debate with people who speak during public comment. You can ask questions for-
That's what I did tonight with the person from the public, correct?
Yeah.
It was brief.
You can make a brief report on your act- You can make a brief report on your activities. And you can make brief announcements, like the tree lighting ceremony at the plaza will take place next week, even though those things are not on the agenda.
Could I ask you a question about something on the Brown Act?
Sure.
It's my understanding that all of our elected officials in Sacramento are not subject to the Brown Act. Is that true?
That's very true.
What's the rationale there? I don't get it.
There is no rationale.
That's all there is, huh? That's what I thought. Okay.
They decided you all needed much more scrutiny than they do. In terms of disruptions, this may be my last point, I'd like to make some comments on. I don't know if the commission has had that problem in the past. I don't think it has. A person who comes up to the podium and decides to turn around and address the audience and not you, in my view, that's disrupting your meeting, and you have the power to tell that person to not do that anymore. And if they persist, you have the power to close the meeting temporarily and talk with that person in the recess and suggest that that's not how you conduct business. If it continues after you reopen the meeting and they get back and they're grandstanding to the audience and it's really causing a disruption, you can ask that they be removed by the local police. Whether you wish to do that is another matter. A couple of cases that are interesting, they're cited on the top of this page. In one case, a person doing the public comment portion gave the Nazi salute to the mayor. Said nothing, just, he did not think the mayor was acting appropriately and in a dictatorial fashion, so he gave him the Nazi salute. The mayor had the fellow removed physically from the council meeting, and that was held to be inappropriate, that the mayor stepped over his or her balance, because there was actually no disruption in the meeting itself. There has to be actual disruption. And that can mean that, as I mentioned before, a person who's speaking in public comment actually leaves the podium, comes up to the commission, and does something at the desk there, or shouts loudly during the meeting itself from the audience, causing disruption, and consistently does that and persists in doing that kind of thing. Those are the kind of disruptive activities that warrant shutting the meeting down temporarily and talk to that person. And if that doesn't work, then finding a way to remove that person from the chambers.
How quickly will the police respond to this panic button?
That has yet to be tested.
I know we tested it at the Visitors Bureau one time, and they were there within three or four minutes.
That sounds about right to me.
That concludes my comments on the Brown Act. Are there any questions?
This is just more of a general conduct question. Sonoma's relatively small community. Good news, bad news, I tend to be rather gregarious with people in public. Is there a problem with perception of having coffee with James at Pete's or getting together with Mr. McDonald about street tweets or something? I mean, is there a liability there?
There's no real liability. Perception, obviously, is another thing altogether. If you've been doing that on a fairly regular basis over the course of time, and you've not received any untoward comments about it, then I suspect that, at least in this community, that's not a big issue.
I have a question. It might not specifically apply to Brown Act, but it has to probably more apply to the Public Records Act. And that's email exchanges between private citizens, between commissioners, between developers where you're sent specific questions via email. Are those public records? And do we have to CC the city attorney, David, or something when we're being asked questions? So it's a matter of record or, I mean?
You don't need to do that. You don't need to CC anybody. It is already considered a public record. You don't need to send it to anybody.
Is it discoverable?
If it deals with city business, yes. There's a recent Supreme Court case in California came down regarding council members in San Jose who were texting and emailing. And the city of San Jose contended that emails on a private mobile device or private desktop that was owned by the council members, using their own email address, not a city email address, are private and are not covered by the Public Records Act. And the Supreme Court disagreed with the city and said, oh, yes, they are. So if you are emailing or texting anybody, be it a commissioner, fellow commissioner, a citizen, responding to a citizen complaint about something that happened at the commission, those are likely subject to disclosure if they are asked to be disclosed. The Public Records Act has its own procedure by which, you don't need to file litigation to get public records. Any human being, any person can submit a written request, it doesn't even need to be written, to the city, asking for all emails sent by every commissioner in the last five years regarding the hotel project. And you're likely going to have to go through all of your emails to generate a response to those.
I'd like to add to that just very briefly. First, just to reiterate, if it's a communication that's occurring about a pending project, that's a communication that should be disclosed anyway at the meeting, because it's an outside communication and you want, you know, similarly, if you'd met with a neighbor group or whatever. I mean, if it was a meaningful communication about the project that had information relevant to your decision-making, I should say, not just.
Yeah, I think that's true. If it's connected to a reason why you're deciding in a particular way.
Right. Not just some random thing. But that said, we are going to be sending out individual planning commission or emails for each of you that we would encourage you to use for planning commission business. And that might help, you know, just keep track of things. And it will also help with group communications, like when we're emailing agendas and Lake correspondence and so forth. So that's something that's going to be made available to you shortly. But yes, any communications that you make in your capacity as planning commissioners are, you know, whether it's on your, a text on your cell phone or a planning commission email, is discoverable under the Public Records Act.
Thank you. To follow up on that, so if we have planning commission emails, the law still renders your private email discoverable, right?
If you've used it in your capacity as a planning commissioner. If you haven't, then it isn't.
Right. And I think a key part of that, and again, I have experience with this process, is that a key part of that is the court decision said that it's up to you to go through your emails. You don't turn your emails, from what I understand, over to anyone else. And so, that's correct, right?
You conduct a good faith effort to call from your private emails or all of your emails, those that are personal and have nothing to do with city business, and those that have something to do with city business. That's up to the individual commissioner or council member.
And so then, my final question about that is, because I know other municipalities do, does the city of Sonoma have a retention policy?
Well, we have a retention policy that, you know, addresses a variety of subjects and activities. But to be honest, I'm not sure how it applies to the planning commission. And I would have to ask our city clerk that question.
Okay, thank you.
I think it applies to all, I think it applies to all city records. So if it's considered a city record, it's a city record, and it applies. But I don't know what its context is in the course of email retention at this point.
Commission, with your indulgence, I've asked the chair if I can head off. I'm suffering from a cold.
You may be excused. Thank you very much for suffering through this with us. We ready to move on? I think so. Whoops, we have a question over here from Linda.
I'm going to speak while I can and before he leaves, Jeff. To me, it seems like there's a fine line there about the recusal. If there's a public perception that you may be predisposed and you recuse yourself, I mean, can't the public kind of control that a little bit?
Well, we're going to get into recusals and that topic in our next section. And if I don't answer it as part of the next presentation, we'll circle back and answer at the end.
Okay, so we are on to our final, I think, hopefully, final section of the presentation this evening, which is focused on conflicts of interest, bias, and due process. And so, in general, the conflict of interest question is a question of, may you participate in the decision that is before you? In California, those rules are governed by the Political Reform Act. What essentially the goal of the Political Reform Act is, I'll call it forced ethics, if you will, that you should not be self-interested in the decisions that you make. Under the Political Reform Act, that self-interest is focused on financial conflicts of interest. There are other conflict of interest rules and regulations, and we'll talk very, very briefly about those, that aren't focused necessarily on your financial conflicts of interest. The PRA does cover a wide range of requirements. They're not, the Political Reform Act is not just about conflicts of interest, but that is all we're going to really focus on this evening. But the Political Reform Act includes such things as campaign financing, the disclosure documents that you have to make if you're filing for a campaign, and the disclosure documents you are required to make as a political official, those forms 700s that you have to fill out and give to the city clerk that you all did as part of your appointment process, lobbyist registration and reporting, mass mailing rules, rules about what they call revolving door provisions or post-governmental employment, gifts and honoraria rules about what you can and can't accept, and gift limits about what you can and can't accept. And then, this topic for this evening, the financial conflicts of interest by public officials. The Political Reform Act is essentially administered and enforced by an independent state agency, and that is the Fair Political Practices Commission, or what we all refer to as the FPPC. That body is, in fact, independent and has its own governing body, its own board, and also its own staff. It isn't subject to the power of any other state agency, and it essentially has independent authority to both enforce and provide advice. So here's the basic prohibition. No public official at any level of state or local government shall make, participate in the making, or in any way attempt to use his or her official position to influence the making of a governmental decision that he or she knows or has a reason to know they have a financial interest. So that's pretty broad when you think about that one. What is that about? Well, it's about, whoops, sorry, went too fast. It's about making the decision, participating in the making decision, or influencing the making of a decision. And it covers all of those particular subtopics. What is a financial interest? A financial interest in a decision, if it is reasonably foreseeable that the decision will have a material financial effect distinguishable from the effect of the public generally on you, your immediate family, and we'll discuss later what immediate family means, or on any of the enumerated economic interests in the statutes. And we'll talk about what each of those are. The analysis really is step-by-step analysis. Is a public official involved? Are they making, participating, and making or influencing a decision? What are the interests? Is the financial effect material? Is it reasonably foreseeable? And then finally, does an exception apply? So the first step is, is the person a public official? You can see the definition of what a public official is in the statute there, but I'll tell you flat out, you're all public officials for the purpose of this statute. Are you making a governmental decision? What's making a decision? Those are pretty obvious. Voting on the matter, committing the agency to an action, entering into a contractor agreement, or appointing somebody to a committee, board, subcommittee, et cetera. Those are all making decisions. Pretty much what you do in this room is making a decision. That's the easy one. What's participating in making a decision? All right, well, a lot more things are potentially participating in making a decision. Negotiating something, making recommendation to the decision maker if they don't have substantive review subsequent thereto, presenting analysis, opinion, reports. So if you go off researching something and present a report, and that is not subject to subsequent review, that's participating in the making of a decision. Just like conducting research or investigation on your own, that's participating in the making of a decision. What's influencing a decision? And this is the one that gets, I would say, tripped over and violated more often than anything else. So contacting, appearing before or otherwiseing, attempting to influence a member, officer, here's a key one, employee, consultant of that agency, meaning this city, or anyone who's subject to the budgetary control of the agency. So what does that really mean? Let's talk about that a minute. So you've got a conflict of interest because there's a financial interest in the outcome of the decision. It's about your next-door neighbor's property, as a for instance. Attempting to influence a decision can be as much as setting an appointment with staff, sitting down with staff and telling staff what you think ought to be in their staff report. If you've got a financial conflict of interest relative to something, attempting to influence what staff puts into their report is a violation. You have to stay at arm's length, and your only opportunity for participation is, as we had talked about previously, after you've recused yourself, participating to represent your own interests. But privately, attempting to influence the decision by attempting to influence staff or your fellow commission members outside of the confines of a meeting is, in fact, a violation of the Act. There are a few exceptions. And here, we're back again, speaking before the agency in the course of the regular hearing to represent your personal interest, or if there's really no decision made, it's a ministerial, secretarial type of information. In other words, you offer to type something up for someone. That's fine. You can do that. So what economic interests are involved? I put the first three that are the most important on the first page. Real property in which you or a member of your immediate family has an interest worth $2,000 or more. That could be an ownership interest or a leasehold interest. Personal finances of your immediate family. And here's where we're getting into what that means. Immediate family is your spouse, your registered domestic partner, or your dependent children. Immediate family doesn't include your adult children living independently. So it could have an economic effect on your adult children living independently. That is not a disqualifying interest, unless they are dependent on you for the majority of their support. Sources of income other than loans by a commercial lending institution. So don't worry about your mortgage or your Visa card. Those are all, those don't matter. Aggregating $500 or more within the 12 months preceding the decision, that is an economic interest that has to be considered. Gifts valued at $460 or more. That's a weird number, I know. It's because it moves on an annual basis. That's why that number's so strange. Received or promised to the official within the 12 months prior to the decision. There are some exceptions to the gift rules, but in general, those apply. A business investment, again, your immediate family, value of $2,000 or more. Or an entity in which you are a director, officer, partner, trustee, or employee, or hold a position of management, could be an economic interest that subjects you to nonparticipation. The next step is determining whether there is a material financial effect. I'm going to tell you that those of you who are back with us after a hiatus, these rules have changed substantially in the last few years. There used to be, what, relative to real. There used to be, what, relative to real property, a very nice, big, bright-line rule, that we love to refer to as the 500-foot rule. That bright-line rule is anything but bright anymore. The 500-foot rule essentially says that if the subject of the decision is within 500 feet of real property owned by you, that that is presumed to be a material financial effect. That rule is still in effect within the 500 feet, but you don't, you, as an individual, no longer get to decide whether or not there is no effect, and that you could participate. You must have a written opinion from the Fair Political Practices Commission in order to be able to participate if the object of the decision is within 500 feet of real property which you own, or lease.
Excuse me just a minute. David, at one point, we had a city map that showed the 500-foot thing for all council members and planning commission members. Can we get another version of that?
We are updating that as we speak.
Thank you.
Since we're talking about this, the 500-foot rule, when we're talking about, like, the general plan or the zoning code, where we're, like, rezoning property, how does a commission function when, essentially, if we all own real property, how do we make those legislative decisions?
So there's a couple of ways. They fall within a couple of the exceptions that we'll get to a little bit, but with regard to a general plan or a specific plan, there's a specific separate set of rules that deal with segregating the plan out, so that you make your decisions in sections, for lack of a better word, I'm paraphrasing a little bit, in a way that each of you doesn't participate in those things that affect your area, as a for instance. So if your neighborhood is being considered for a rezone as a result of doing zoning, a group of zoning amendments, or your area is getting general plan changes, then we would segregate that out, have a separate discussion on that section. And then it gets all put back together, and ultimately, everybody is permitted to vote on the final version. But the votes addressing themselves and the discussion addressing itself to your neighborhood is something you wouldn't participate in.
Thank you. Can I ask a follow-up on the 500-foot?
Of course.
So it says here that if you have a letter from the FPPC, you can participate within 500 feet if there's no reasonably foreseeable effect on your real property?
That is correct. The FPPC can make a decision that there is no effect on your property, and give you that in writing. And if they have done so, then you can participate. But that, now under the new rules, is the only way you can participate.
So you could before?
If it's in 500 feet. Before, it was up to you to make a determination whether or not there would be no effect. And often, a planning commissioner or a city council member would do so by obtaining an appraisal. Will this project have an effect on my, a material effect on my property? And you relied on substantial evidence that said no, then, under the previous rules, you were sort of free to self-govern that. Under the new rules, you are not. The FPPC itself governs the determination within 500 feet as to whether or not there would be any economic effect on your real property. The other, the other strange, oh, sorry, I apologize. Go ahead.
I just have a quick question for myself as a commissioner. I do not own property in Sonoma, or in California for that matter. I'm a renter. So it all seems to relate to the fact that this is, that you have some sort of property ownership, but what rules would apply to a renter?
So there are rules that specifically, there are specific leasehold interest rules that apply to leasehold interests in real property. So let's say you had a two-year lease as a, as a renter. There are a specific set of rules that apply to that leasehold interest. Would it affect the, your rent? Would, I don't have them here with me, but would it affect your rent? Those types of things. If you have specific questions about that, if we're within 500 feet, we can talk about those. They are a little looser than the ownership rules for obvious reasons, but they are, it is not a non-interest, meaning a leasehold interest is still an interest. A month-to-month tenancy is not. So the other thing that the, the last set of amendments to these rules did was broaden the circle. It used to be, sort of, you could presume not to have a material financial effect if you were outside the 500-foot radius. Now, unfortunately, that is no longer true at all. And there is no line beyond which these rules say, oh, there is no interest. The, one, two, three, fourth bullet point down now is the analysis that takes place as to whether or not beyond 500 feet, a material financial effect can be found relative to a real property interest. So the questions of, would it change the character of the parcel of real property, substantially alter traffic levels, intensity of use, parking noise levels, views, privacy, air quality, odors, et cetera. Starting to sound a little bit like environmental review, isn't it? I will tell you that we've, I have worked with the attorneys at the FPPC on behalf of multiple council members and commissioners in various cities, trying to ascertain whether something beyond 500 feet, I'm at 750, I'm at 1,000 feet, I'm at 1,200 feet, is there a financial conflict of interest? Is it material beyond those? And many, many times, the only way we were able to ascertain that was by reference to an environmental document that analyzed each of these topics. So it's important that if you are beyond 500 feet but fairly close, that in the event that a decision is coming up before us, or before you as commissioners, that we have a conversation with staff, with our office, and then ultimately, generally, with the FPPC, in order to make sure that your interests, you are protected, and that your interests are sufficiently remote, that there will not be a material, a material financial effect on your property. And they're the obvious ones. Obviously, if the property itself is a subject, that's obviously a material financial effect. If the property itself is being sold or leased, this is usually not subject to the planning commission, but if the property, the county, the city is buying your property or leasing your property, obviously, that's a material financial effect. Sources of income. So the sources of income rules are governed by the statute noted, or the regulation noted, and they are extremely complicated. I'll just say, if the source of income of $500 or more in the 12 months preceding the decision is the applicant, that's a material financial effect. So, for instance, you did accounting work for Mrs. Jones, and Mrs. Jones is now before this commission with a second-story addition to her residence. Only the accounting work that you did for Mrs. Jones within six months ago, when tax season, Mrs. Jones paid you $750 to do her taxes. Had nothing to do with her second-story addition, and Mrs. Jones has been your client for 15 years, and you've been doing her taxes for 15 years. Mrs. Jones being a source of income to you in excess of $500 in the 12 months preceding the decision that is being made is a disqualifying financial interest. Business entities, nonprofits, et cetera, all of those essentially rely back to as if they were the applicant, and the rules in the regulations for disqualification are similar, or almost the same, as those for, if you were receiving that income directly. So the final bullet point here, the second-to-last bullet point here, a reasonably foreseeable financial effect on a person who is a source of income to a public official is deemed to be material if you receive or promise the income to achieve the goal or purpose, or to defeat the goal or purpose. So regardless of the amount of the income, if somebody says to you, "I'm going to pay you to vote no," or "I'm going to pay you to vote nah," yes, obviously, that is a material financial effect. There is one exception. If you own a retail sales business, so you own a Starbucks, bad example, probably never going to get above $500. You own a furniture store, and Mrs. Smith comes in during the normal course of business and buys a couch from you, and there are no other, you sell it on the same terms and conditions as you would be selling that couch to anyone else. Her being a patron of your business is not a, your retail sales business is not a disqualifying Gifts, those material, materiality standards are set forth in the statute noted. Again, if the giver of the gift, with certain exceptions, of whatever my amount was, $400 and whatever dollars, is the subject of the matter before you, so Mrs. Smith now is, gave you a gift of a $500 ticket to the theater, that's a disqualifying interest as well. I won't go through all of these, whether or not it is reasonably foreseeable, but there are six factors, and these are not an exclusive list, as to whether or not it is reasonably foreseeable that the economic interest will be materially affected. And you can see that there are a number of factors to be considered in determining whether or not there is foreseeability. So there are a couple of exceptions, and we started to talk about one of them a little bit earlier, and we'll talk about these two exceptions in a little bit of detail. So a governmental decision's financial effect on a public official's financial interest is indistinguishable from its effect on the public generally if the official establishes that a significant segment of the public population, which, and I mean population of Sonoma, which is at least, a significant segment is at least 25%, is affected, same as you are. And the effect is not unique compared to the effect on the significant segment. So think about that for a minute. So if, in fact, you are doing a rule that says, "Everybody now has to have a 30-foot front setback instead of 25," and it affects everyone in the city the same, then it doesn't matter that it affects you. However, if, in fact, you have an application pending, and that 30-foot setback is obviously going to affect you differently than the rest of the city, then you would, in fact, have, still have a financial conflict of interest. The other exception has to do with legally required participation, and this one's a little quirky, and less likely to be applicable to the planning commission than it is the city council, partially because you are a seven-member body. But if a public official has a financial conflict of interest, they may participate if they are legally required to do so in order for a decision to be made. So what does that really mean? We cannot make a decision without that official's participation due to, for instance, we don't have enough planning commission members seated. We've had that situation previously. We must make the decision, and it must be made within a specific time period, so we can't just put it off or wait. If that's the case, then we, the financial conflict of interest is disclosed. As I said, no other method exists, meaning we can't just wait, for whatever reason. We draw hats. We draw out of a hat, or some other random selection method. So if we have, let's say, three members, four members with a conflict of interest, so we can't get to a quorum, we can't make a decision, we would then put the three, four conflicted members' names into a hat and draw randomly. The person that we draw is the one who participates. The others do not. Only the minimum number necessary to participate and make a decision are brought forward. The rest continue to recuse themselves and not participate. Legally required participation doesn't mean, hey, we've got a tie vote and we need to, one more person to break the tie. That's not legally required participation. And if somebody is just not here, they're on vacation, and therefore, we don't have a quorum. No, we have to wait till the vacationing party comes back. Just being absent isn't a cause for legally required participation. I think it's important to note that, I think, the chair mentioned, we used to have maps. You will, again, have the proximity maps. The other thing that staff is going to be doing is starting out with, making sure that the planning commission and all of its members has notice of an upcoming matter. So you'll get the 20-day hearing notice the same way that anyone else would, who has, was within proximity of the decision before you. Whether you're in proximity or not, the planning commission members are all going to be added to every mailing list, essentially. What that means is, is that you need to start paying attention to those notices, of course, and thinking about, when you receive a notice, am I close? Is this in my neighborhood? Might I be affected? Because what that notice is intended to do at this point is trigger your thought process into raising the questions, so that we can help you determine whether or not you will be disqualified from participating, and help you get advice from the Fair Political Practices Commission that could potentially allow you to participate. If you wait until the day before the hearing or the day of the hearing, I can't tell you how many times I've had this happen, council member or planning commission member steps down off the dais and says, "Oh, I've just realized. Item number two is a block away from my house. Can I participate?" Well, you're probably, I'm probably going to say, Jeff will probably say, "No, you shouldn't." Why? Because we probably don't have enough facts to help you at that point. We will err on the side of caution, because we are not the ones who get fined, you are. And frankly, without the facts and a full-on analysis, it's impossible to be able to encourage you to participate in a matter that's before you, given that our mistake, if we say, "Yes, go ahead," results in potential for overturning the decision and a potential for you to receive a fine from the FPPC. So don't wait. Look at it when you receive the notices. Bring it up, and we can help you to get through the, you know, morass of regulations and obtain an opinion and advice. So let's talk for a minute about the FPPC advice. There are essentially three ways that you can get advice about an upcoming decision. But I want to be clear, it's only about an upcoming decision. The FPPC, in none of the ways that they provide you advice, will provide you advice that is theoretical, or possible, or you think maybe something might come up later, so you want to know the answer to X. They won't provide that advice. It has to be about an upcoming decision. And they won't provide post-decision advice. So you're not going to get advice after you've already made a decision or participated in the making of a decision. Only will they get, they will only give prospective advice. There are three ways, and they're all listed here for you. Informal telephone advice, by calling the number that's indicated here during the times that they're available, is one method, and it's a click method, because it is fairly instantaneous of obtaining advice. It has some downsides. One, the person giving you the advice is a technician. They are not an attorney, and they may or may not be able to give you the advice. Generally, what they will do is direct you to previous opinions on the topic or subject and say, "Well-" is direct you to previous opinions on the topic or subject, and say, well, we can tell you, I can send you these three opinions where someone else has asked for formal advice that's close to your topic. They can help guide you. So in many ways, while informal telephone advice is fast, it isn't quite as helpful as the other methods. Informal email advice. Informal email advice is actually fairly quick as well, and I have actually had the FPPC respond, to me at least, when I have, I don't recommend this, on the day of a hearing, a council member or commissioner has come to me and said, uh-oh, I just realized I might have a problem here. We have been able to send an urgent message to the email, and say, this is urgent. This is coming up at 5:00. It's now 9:00 in the morning. Is there any way you can get back to me? Well, sometimes they can, and sometimes they can't, and often, it just depends on how complicated the issue is. I have had them get back to us. I've also had them send an email, a sort of canned response that says, we're not going to be able to get back to you on this now. The advice email is manned by staff attorneys of the FPPC. And why is that important? Well, they really have the ability to talk through the issues with you on email. Oftentimes, you'll get an email, or our office will get an email if we've done it on your behalf, that says, I've been assigned your matter. Call me. And gives the individual person's phone number that says, I don't have enough here. I can't answer your question, because we need to have a back-and-forth discussion about this. But if you call me right now, I'll answer the phone, and we can talk about it. You will also, in this regard, get a written response. You'll get an email back, ultimately, even after that phone call, that memorializes the discussion. Now, why is that important? Well, while informal advice, even in the form of an email, will not confer immunity on you, meaning you could still be prosecuted or fined if that advice is wrong, it's highly unlikely, in my opinion. One of the reasons that they have the attorneys, in my view, manning the advice email, is because once they've given you written advice, it's very hard to then flip on you and fine you for the advice that they gave you. Now, that's not true if your facts are incorrect, or you haven't given them all the facts, or you've not been truthful in the factual scenario, or you've left out important facts. But it is less likely that you will be prosecuted or fined for a violation of the act, where you've given fair information, and you've been given advice that you can participate, and then you go and do it, and then later, a complaint is filed. So I prefer the advice email line over the telephone advice, because I think it is more reliable, and provides you, while not actual immunity, at least some protection. And finally, the third way you can get advice from the FPPC is a formal written request for advice. That formal written request for advice can be submitted to the same advice line, but you're asking for a formal written opinion, as opposed to, as opposed to informal email response. You have to put in all of the facts that are, that give rise to the question, and unfortunately, it takes 21 days, up to 21 days, to get a response. So you start to see that, while formal advice does confer immunity on you, meaning you cannot be prosecuted if formal advice has been given and followed, but it does take some time. And they sometimes have quite a bit of backlog, so it can take that full 21 days. And I will tell you, having asked for formal written advice on some occasions, that 21 days is a little bit loose, because if they feel like you haven't given them all the facts, they're going to come back and say, well, it's 21 days from us receiving all the facts, so now, give us more, give us more, give us more. And I had one that ran out about six months, at one point.
I have a question about that. I've actually done one of the formal advices before, and they have a element of their website that has all of the letters, all the formal letters they've ever, and-
And they're searchable.
Yeah, and I've perused them on occasion, and I find often that, in other cities, our city attorney writes the letter for us. And it seems like we are required to sort of present this legal case on our own here, and I'm curious-
No, we are happy to submit it on your behalf, write it for you, help you glean the facts. I often have, even with the email advice line, submitted the email from me on behalf of the commissioner or council member, in an effort to, it is true that we probably know what facts are more important, and what facts are more relevant to the decision, but I don't know the facts independently. No one in our office knows the facts independently. It is difficult, many times, there's a little bit of a balance there. You're the ones who, you know, get into trouble, embarrassed, fined, whatever. Not us. It doesn't fall to us. Even if we're wrong, even if we don't give the right facts, even if, heaven forbid, we leave facts out, none of that is a defense for you. So in many instances, there's this little bit of a push-pull of, can we help you? Yes, we can help you to submit it. We can request the formal advice on your behalf, and we will do so if you so request. But it takes quite a while. There's even more lead time necessary to do that, because then you have to transfer the facts to us, and then we have to send it back to you. Is this right? Do you agree? Are there any other additional facts? Staff oftentimes has to become involved, and so 21 days, 21 days isn't going to do it at that point. It may be, you know, two months, by the time we go back and forth about the facts, et cetera, and glean all of the appropriate facts. But we are, we are happy to do that on your behalf, and to help you out. And this is just, you know, finally, obviously, when you do have a financial conflict of interest under the act, you must recuse yourself from participation. You must announce the nature of the conflict, step down from the dais, and leave the room. And the leave the room part is to protect you, because there have been situations where they've said, well, someone was silently communicating from the back of the room their, their desire to have the project approved or denied. The Political Reform Act isn't the only consideration. Conflicts of interest can arise under Government Code Section 1090, which is conflicts in contracting. And common law conflicts of interest may also still be applicable. So I'm going to quickly run through due process and bias, because we've actually touched on this about four times tonight, so I'm not sure we need to talk too much more about it. But obviously, the idea of conflicts of interest, due process, and bias is one of, sort of a fundamental fairness in the process. Are both sides of the issue being heard? Has everyone had an opportunity to be heard? Advanced notice of the meeting? Is the decision-maker fair and impartial? And then, obviously, did they ever, does the decision-maker ever get to a decision? And then the right to appeal. Bias is an interesting question. It extends beyond the concepts, obviously, of financial gain or loss, but does extend to the concepts of common law conflict of interest. Biases can be shown, then a fundamental due process right has been denied. There are several types of bias that might exist. Personal interest in the outcome. I just don't like the project. A personal bias. I just don't like the person. An ideological bias. I don't like their, who they are, or what it is they're proposing. You'll see, sometimes that comes up. Personal interests in the outcome. There's some cases law. You can take a look at the summary here, but suffice it to say, this is that question of, I would be affected, but not my economic interest, per se, but my enjoyment of my property. Not necessarily that it's going to be a plus or a minus economically, but it might not be as nice to live there if said project goes forward. And in this instance, it was a view protection. Decision was set aside by the court. There can be issues. There have been cases where the bias is about religious beliefs, like somebody who was pro-life didn't want to approve a Planned Parenthood clinic. Or a history of animosity between the applicant and a commissioner, or a council member. And there are a few cases out there with longstanding animosities between the parties, where the court overturned the entirety of the decision based on the participation of one member who was, in fact, had a standing animosity with the applicant. This case has been a case that has driven decision-makers crazy since 2004, when it came down. A planning commissioner, in this instance, wrote an article that was critical of a project in his neighborhood newsletter, why he thought the project was a bad project. The entirety of the commission, or the majority of the commission, even without his vote, voted against the project in question. Unfortunately, for the commissioner in question, and for the city as a whole, the court found that the article that the commissioner had written gave an unacceptable probability of bias, and the action of the planning commission in turning down the project was overturned. So this is why you hear us lots of times say to you, don't say you don't like the project before the hearing. Don't say you think it's a bad project. Don't tell your neighbor. Don't write a note about it. It's really because of this case, and the fact that that appearance of bias, of having made a decision before ever getting to hear the facts that were presented at the hearing, has resulted in a decision being overturned in the past. This case is a very interesting case, that also was a due process case. Ultimately, the case was de-published, but this is a situation of whether or not you are providing due process if you are not listening to what's going on in the hearing. And in this case, a majority of the city council members were fiddling with their cellphones, talking to one another, up and out of their seats, talking to individual members of the, and this went on and on and on for the entirety of the hearing, where a majority of the body appeared to not be paying attention. And the Court of Appeal basically said, that was a fundamental lack of due process, because you couldn't tell whether or not anybody was listening to the actual facts being presented at the hearing. Now, as I said, the court, the case has been de-published, so it can't actually be relied on by someone incited as precedent. But it gives a pretty good indication of how, how the court views the whole fundamental due process, process of a hearing before a planning commission or city council, and why the court thinks it's so important. And if you have any questions, I hope I can answer them. I didn't get to it. Didn't answer your question.
I know you didn't. And I've seen it happen here.
Here at meetings. So, and just for my own ethics commit, you know, taking the test, kind of alerted me to the fact that even the perception of a bias can lead to a recusal. Is that-
Could I take a stab at that?
Sure.
I know, I'm not the lawyer, but I'm just going to-
But you play one on TV.
You did?
Well, there's a couple of things about bias. I mean, first, you know, hopefully you know whether or not you're biased. There's not, you know, so that's something to keep in mind. In the examples that have been given, it can be kind of a-
Slippery slope?
A slippery slope, and with a lot of gray area to it. But just because someone says, well, you're a housing advocate, for example, so I know you're going to vote for a project with housing, that doesn't make you biased, even though they may perceive you to be biased. That, it's not like that. There needs to be some basis for saying that your decision is being influenced by factors that are just outside of the normal process.
So I think what I would say to your question is this. An appearance of bias isn't enough. There would have to be facts that would support that appearance of bias. So in other words, I think you're biased because you always vote in favor of housing projects, and so you're biased or predisposed to do so, isn't a bias. It may just be that that is your, you're an advocate, you feel like housing is a good thing, but you're applying the facts to the law, and you're voting in favor, or not in favor, of the project. But if you, in fact, have factually stated in the public, I am going to approve this project, I love this project, I think we have to have 1,000 more projects just like this project, then that might be a bias. Or conversely, the opposite could be true. I hate this project. I don't want it. But your voting record, your involvement in development, or landscaping, or as a real estate professional alone, no, that's never going to be an indication of bias, even though someone in the public might perceive it to be so. Bias really has to be pretty egregious. It has to really be a statement on the record, or in public, that would lead one to believe that you had an inability to be fair and impartial.
And I guess the only other thing I would add is that, you know, unfortunately, that question is too broad to be answered, really, because it's very fact-specific. And so, it's not enough to say, well, there's, I've seen instances of a perception of bias being applied. I mean, we need to know what that, we need to see that example, and the response to that example might be very different than the response we'd give to a different example.
Okay. I think we have satisfied most of the questions from the commission, so I think that concludes that item. Thank you very much, Veronica.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your endurance.
Questions from the public?
Yes.
I doubt there are any, since there's no members of the public actually here.
To the public. If anyone would like to step forward to the podium, you may ask us a question. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Let's move on to the next item, which is issues update.
All right. Thank you, Chair Felder. Just very briefly, since we've already been out this for a while, this isn't exactly an issue, but I would like to take this opportunity to thank Commissioner Cribb. We've had kind of a tumultuous year on the planning commission, and his service as the chair brought us through that very well, and I thank you for that.
Yes, I would like to second that.
Second, I would like, and I think I noted this in an email, it's, we have quite a, well, somewhat of a backlog of planning applications, because this meeting has been devoted to orientation. And so we would like you to reserve the second, to reserve on your calendar space for a second meeting in January, which would be the fourth Thursday.
Do you have a date?
Yes.
25th.
25th, thank you. And in the, moving forward in terms of issues updates, this is typically an opportunity to brief the planning commission on projects that are in progress, and related matters, and we will do that. But we haven't prepared such a briefing tonight, because, again, this is an orientation. So that's all I've got for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Comments from the commission? Anyone care to join in with comments?
Yeah, I would like to say one thing. Before I get to that, I just want to thank David. I thought this was a great presentation tonight, and I think it sort of covered things that we all sort of already knew, but it was just very helpful to see it all in context, all at once, so, and Veronica, and the entire staff. So I wanted to-
So, I wanted to, and I guess this is the opportunity to possibly agendize something for discussion at the next meeting. When, at the very beginning, when we were talking about process, being on the Design Review Commission for the last seven and a half years, and I'm sure Bob and James can sort of also speak to this, it seems like there might be a little hole in that process because at the Planning Commission, you know, we, the Planning Commission approves site design and massing, and then by the time it gets to the Design Review, we're supposed to do materials and architecture, but oftentimes, there's really not much flexibility there. And oftentimes, that should potentially come before it even gets to the Planning Commission. Or perhaps it should be, if a large project comes before the Planning Commission, perhaps maybe they should do the Design Review, just Design Review element as well, you know, because in my view, and perhaps others, design is actually a very important part of planning. I think this would be helpful for the project. I mean, I noticed there were projects in the old Planning Commission that seemed to get hung up on design, and then the response would be, just pass it off to the Design Review Commission. And I think it's actually, would make a better project to be able to discuss those issues here, and I think it would also be more helpful for the developer because once you get your planning approval, they could, you know, you move on. You don't have to go back to the Design Review Commission, so.
So, you're looking, sorry, I wanted to just kind of focus us back on the agendizing. So, you're looking to request that the commission agendize that discussion on this topic?
Yes. I mean, I assume we can't just pass that now.
No, you can't.
Yeah, so I would.
You really can't even discuss it now.
Because we don't even know what it is.
Yeah. So, I would just.
But those are your reasons for wanting to agendize.
My question is, can I just request that, or does the commission have to vote on whether they want to agendize it?
So, you can just request it, but in order for it to actually hit an agenda, the, my majority of your commissioners, your fellow commissioners would need to agree.
And, you know, and again, as Veronica noted, we can't get into a big discussion of this issue tonight because it isn't on the agenda. But you can certainly say, yeah, I'm interested in hearing more about this, or I'm interested in exploring these options. Or conversely, I'm not. I like the way the system is right now. But the point is, you can get your message across without engaging in a lot of specific discussion about potential changes that you might wish to consider because if there was that interest, that would happen later.
I'd like to, with the chair, agree with Kelso. I think that we do need to discuss this as a commission because it has caused some undue discussions about, you know, how to move forward on projects, and so I would also agree that at some point in the foreseeable future that the commission talk about this.
Okay.
And a process maybe.
Other people?
I would, I would support that idea strongly. I think that we need some kind of, particularly specifically architectural review in the beginning before it comes, I mean, I would like to see it before it comes before the, as an applicant before the commission. I think we could, and I think we've seen a couple of projects that were significant housing projects that I particularly think they would have benefited from that.
I want to limit this.
Right. Just if it's a good idea, and if you're interested.
I think we just want to hear a yea or nay. Do we want to discuss it? Because otherwise, we're going to get into this thing. So, I would.
I agree.
Okay. And Mr. Wellender, even though he hasn't spoken into the mic, agrees. And how about Mr. Cribb?
I'll agree that we should discuss it.
And I, we have a unanimous agreement to discuss it.
And just, I wanted to, again, without getting into great detail, I'd want to do, just say two things, I'm actually going to go up to three, but very quickly. First, this isn't likely to come back to you until February because, again, we've got kind of a backlog already. So, I don't want to just, I don't want to overpromise in terms of when this comes back. Second, it's going to be, if it goes anywhere, a pretty lengthy discussion because there's a lot of things to sort out in terms of responsibilities that will also involve, of course, input from the Design Review and Historic Preservation Commission. So, you know, just looking forward, it's, it's a great thing to talk about and get sorted out. It's going to take some time to do that. I just want to emphasize that.
We understand that.
And also, since we're talking about potential items discussed in the future, we touched a little bit about the study session process. Is that something that we could all agree that in the next few meetings that we talk about that process, or?
Well, your study session guidelines are going to be on the next agenda.
Okay, so, okay, so they order. Okay.
We definitely need some direction there. If there is no other comments from the commission, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Again, thank you all very much for.